I'd like to call the December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission to order. The first thing that's listed on the agenda is about the order of items on our agenda. Given the number of people that I believe are here on the county zoning issue, and absent objection of any other planning commissioners, I propose that we take the two miscellaneous variance items first. Because I think we're going to spend some time before we get to those. So if nobody objects, we'll start going through the housekeeping items here first, and then start with miscellaneous item number one. This time, ask if everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes from the November twentieth, nineteen, meeting? And if they have, if there are any changes or modifications to those. Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept them? We have a motion from Commissioner Sands. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ashworth. All those in favor? Pass is ten zero. Are there any reports from any other, from committees over the last month?
Just the MPO met, and there was no voting actions. We just received the list of federal-funded projects that were obligated in Douglas County for federal fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Are there any additional written communications from the public that didn't make it to the packet?
No.
Any written communications from staff, planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
No.
No? Any written action or waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer? This time, ask if any commissioner has any ex parte communications they wish to disclose. Commissioner Ashworth?
I had a discussion this weekend with Jennifer Dela at the Kansas Biological Survey regarding an edit made on the zoning topic tonight, and around the definition of restored grid.
Commissioner Willie?
Can we have everyone use their microphones? It's really hard to hear out in the audience. I had quite a few conversations just in and around about the zoning regulations, but all of those will come out in the communications as we, as we work through that item.
All right. Any others?
I did have a conversation with Randy Cre who has submitted written comments, and also we had some talk about the zoning regulations again.
Okay. All right. Any commissioners intend to abstain from any items on the agenda tonight? Mr. Struckoff?
I'll be abstaining from item two, the height and density text amendment, because of possibility of appearance of conflict. My employer is nearby, and out of a bunch of caution, I will abstain.
All right. Any others? At this time, we open the floor to what's called general public comment. If you're here for any of the items that are on the agenda, that would be the eighth and pen item, the county zoning amendments, or either the miscellaneous variances, we'd ask you wait until the appropriate time on those. But if anyone has, wants to comment on any issues regarding land use in the city or county, that is not considered elsewhere on our agenda tonight, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll close that. So that will bring us to miscellaneous item number one. Consider a variance request from section twenty eighty-four of the subdivision regulations to allow a certificate of survey at seven eighty-five North fifteen fifty Road.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Mueller, one of the planners. And as you mentioned, this is a variance request from the access requirements for the cluster development certificates of survey in the urban growth area. The subject property is approximately twenty acres. It's in the southeast corner of North fifteen fifty Road and East eight hundred Road. This is in the UGA. They've submitted a cluster certificate of survey, and that was included in your packet just for context. That's processed administratively. But we do need you to take action on the variance request. This shows the layout of the certificate of survey. The property owner plans to divide it into thirds. One of the requirements of a cluster certificate of survey is that forty percent, at least, is put into a future development area that cannot be developed until the property is annexed. And so this shows the arrangement of the residential development parcels and the future development areas. And the plan is for each residential development parcel to be transferred with a future development area, so it's basically dividing the property into thirds. The access being proposed is for each residential development parcel to have one access point off the roadway. The county engineer indicated that with the certificate of survey, RDP two could not maintain the circular drive. One of those access points would need to be closed. And he also determined that there's a field access just to the east of that circular drive that accesses the barn, and that field access could remain. He had no safety concerns with that. And so the variance is from the requirement that a cluster certificate of survey have only one access point. The subregs do allow them to have two access points, if that's necessary, to prevent damage or intrusion to the environmentally sensitive lands that are being protected. But there are no sensitive lands being protected on this property. So we'll look at the criteria. One of the criteria is, does a strict application of the regulations constitute an unnecessary hardship? So this shows how having just one access point and this configuration would work. And that would require a frontage drive along the entire frontage of residential development parcel number two. And this, given the kind of impact this would have on residential development parcel number two, could be seen as a hardship. And it might be seen as unnecessary, as the county engineer indicated, that three access points that are being proposed would be compliant with the access management standards. However, there is another option, and that would be to change the configuration of the parcels. If the three residential development parcels were clustered, they could take access off of one shared drive in the cross-access easement, and the three future development areas could be clustered on the other side. This would remove the need for the frontage road, but it would not accommodate the property owner's plans for his property. So the strict application would require either the access drive across RDP two's frontage, or a reconfiguration of the RDPs and the future development areas. In staff's opinion, the option two would be possible, so we don't believe that the criteria of unnecessary hardship is met. The second criteria is whether the proposed variance is compliant with the, and in harmony with the purpose of the code. The purpose of the cluster development and the shared access point is to allow us to do future planning. For when the property is annexed into the city, that shared drive and the cross-access easement would then be turned into a city street. And it has sixty foot of right-of-way or easement that would convert to right-of-way, which is what you would need for a city street. The building envelopes would include a twenty-five foot setback from the street. And that way, the properties that take access off that, when it annexes into the city and develops as urban blocks, they would just be part of those urban blocks. And the layout with each RDP taking an individual access from the roadway doesn't allow for any of that clustering, or for the future planning. And so that would not be compliant with the intent of the code. It is compliant with the access management standards, however. And so this just illustrates how, if you put a house at the end of those drives, it would not allow for us to have a cross-access easement, which would turn into a future city street. And then the third criteria is whether the public health, safety, and welfare would be protected. And the county engineer indicated that with the topography and with the removal of that extra leg on RDP two, so it just has the one access point. The access points would be compliant with access management standards, and he had no concerns with the impact on the safety. So this criteria would be met with the variance request. And so the findings are that compliance would not necessarily create unnecessary hardship, but it would not accommodate the property owner's plans for the property. The variance request is not compliant with the purpose of the code, which is to cluster RDPs, so they can take one shared access. The public health, safety, and welfare would be protected with the variance. And an important item is that the variance would not increase the development potential of the property. Three residential development parcels could be created with or without the variance. Staffs have looked at an option, that if you felt that the property owner not being able to divide the property as he intends might be a necessary hardship, this is a second option that would allow some clustering. It would allow one residential development parcel to have an individual access point, but the other two to share one access. This would take away the need for a frontage road clear across the frontage of RDP two. And this just shows an illustration, if RDP three is developed last, RDP one could have its access drive. RDP two could continue to use its access until RDP three develops, at which time they would use a shared access point. So this is an option that would not completely comply with the requirement to cluster and utilize one access point, but it would not increase the number of access points that are there today. Today, there's two access points. And with the approval of this variance, you would still have the two access points and that field access. So staff recommends denial of the variance based on the findings of fact, but would support a variance to allow the one additional access point, where two residential development parcels would share one access point, and the other one would have its own individual. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here today as well.
Thank you, Mary. The applicant care to speak?
Chair, are you able to pull up that picture that you had up there? Hi, I'm Tom Marsalino. Thank you for hearing me. I'm not sure what constitutes unnecessary hardship for the applicant, but in front of the house, there's old trees that are fifty years old, mature hardwood trees. So to reconfigure the driveway, you'd have to remove several of those trees, which would be a shame. A lot of the landscaping has been there since nineteen sixty-five, and so it's configured for the purpose of that driveway access point. If you had to reconfigure that as well, there's a lot of drainage issues in that area, where the water comes down right towards the house, so it could potentially create more problems in the basement. There has been some issues that had to be resolved with water running down towards the house, so money was spent to correct the grading and put in terraces to fix that, so it would, to put a cross-access easement road across there would create quite a bit of hardship to try to replan all that. I think that she had said that there would be a sixty-foot right-of-way for a future city street. That doesn't leave hardly any room in front of the house. It's actually a pretty narrow strip there in front of the house, so that could be kind of a weird road, right off that other main road, so. The reason I think that this property needs three driveways is because there's more than thirteen hundred square feet, or thirteen hundred linear feet of road frontage along North fifteen fifty Road, which is a minor collector road. So when you're out there on the property, there's plenty of room to have a driveway servicing each property. It just makes more sense. The other road, eight hundred Road, is a very busy road. It's a major collector road, so the plan is to have this RDP three for the future, when it's incorporated into the city, that property will be not utilized anytime soon. So the driveway there is not as critical at this point, but you never know what can happen in life. And if the property needs to be sold, it may need its own driveway. So to me, it makes sense that trying to reconfigure and do a cross-access easement in the middle of this is just going to be kind of a mess. And so the county engineer didn't have any problems with it. I think that the, the code is designed for a road that would come in into a deep, deep property that would have a cul-de-sac, multiple outbranchings of houses that are developed within it. It's not really designed for a property that has a very long road frontage with enough room for each individual driveway. It's just kind of a cleaner approach to do it this way, but if you have any questions for me about it.
There probably will be.
Okay.
This time, we'll open this item up to public comment. Any members of the public that wish to comment on this, please come up to the podium, sign in, and please clearly state your names. Some of us up here write that down, so we address you properly afterwards. Anyone wish to comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll close it and bring it back up to the commission. Anybody have any first thoughts or questions for Mary or the applicant? Commissioner Willie?
So I, I did give this property a drive-by in the snow today. And just kind of some first thoughts on kind of the property and the layout was that certainly the, the first suggestion of the cross-access easement that crosses the entire RDP two would be extremely awkward for that setting. The house does sit pretty close to the road by, by rural standards, and, and is landscaped and such. Not having, you know, in front of me, all of the, the, the full reasoning for why the driveways need to be clustered to the extent that they do, and I understand this is going to be an ongoing topic, probably even tonight. The least awkward option is the one there that we're looking at with the three driveways. The other options all seem a lot more awkward in terms of how to use the property. I know East eight hundred Road is much busier than North fifteen fifty. But there's also, that option would be to put the RDP three driveway, have to have a culvert through those trees to East eight hundred Road. Really, the North fifteen fifty Road feels like a gravel neighborhood road. It's pretty slow. It's especially slow today in the snow. But with having the, the county engineer say that the, the three driveways don't bother the access management standards, that kind of makes me think we might be able to have some leeway there. But it sounds like even to do that would be still losing that circle drive, which I'm sure was probably not what the applicant was going for either. So those are just my first thoughts. I'd throw it out for discussion.
Any other observations or questions?
I can speak to the circle drive too.
Maggie?
Commissioner Seigans, did you have something?
No, I think...
Though I wouldn't mind hearing what the applicant has to say about the circle drive.
Yeah, so if, if we ever were to develop either one of those parcels, and that, that is a big if, then the circle drive would be eliminated on one of the sides. Probably the further side, you'd disclose that off and just pull straight in. And so that wouldn't be a problem to eliminate that, just then you'd have three drives.
Okay.
And so there's no, there's no immediate plans to develop these parcels. This is just to have that option, you know, if life throws you a curveball or something, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Sands?
I would just say, I'm fairly comfortable with the variance, so long as the second, when one goes in, either an RDP one or RDP three, that second side of the horseshoe goes away just to maintain some standard of spacing with the access points. I'm not uncomfortable with this at all.
So you're suggesting as long as it's maintained at a maximum of three driveways?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would prefer not to see any trees cut down.
Yeah.
It's just my preference.
Mr. Chair? May I ask, staff, may I ask, Mary? How, how unusual would this be to allow this to go forward in this way with the three access points?
Well, it would be a little unusual. We've had some cluster certificates of survey that had an existing residence, and those are usually the ones that need variances, because there's a residence in the way and a drive in the way. And so we have, you have granted some variances to allow that driveway to remain while the rest of the RDPs use a shared access point. So to allow everyone to have their own individual access point would be a little unusual, but if you had a, if you found that either of the options I recommended were not suitable, it would be acceptable.
Mary, that, this circumstance is pretty much by the layout of this property with the residents being in the middle. Because I know with others, we've had it off to a side, and I know we've had one come in at branches before and things like that. But none of them have had the prop, the main house smack dab in the middle of the parcel. It's in my time up here. Is that pretty much, is that kind of fair?
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I don't remember one that was right in the middle, but I can see this is definitely an issue, because you're in the middle. And when I showed the illustration, how you had to do the frontage road across the entire frontage, well, that wouldn't be acceptable. And so the only other option I could see is if you did one, and then when the other one developed, then you shared an access point with it. You put it on the property line, and two of them shared. That option that you just mentioned sounds like a little more disturbance than just three driveways. To the property. Like more disturbance to me.
Could be. I think maybe you're weighing, you know, the amount of disturbance to this property versus the, the purpose of the cross-access easement. And if you have a cross-easement on the property line, when this is annexed, and we try to develop blocks, that will become a street. And we'll be able to divide and say, here where the houses go. In this case, when this gets annexed, we're going to have three houses taking access from a direct road, which may work with the block pattern, and you know, it's not that it couldn't. When they do their certificate of survey and they do their build-out plan, they're going to have to show how streets are going to be extended through this property. And they'll show us the setbacks and the building envelope. So it may work out anyway. We haven't gotten to that point that they've done the build-out plans yet. They'll do that once they learn, if they have the variance. So I can't say for sure that it's not going to accommodate future urban development.
Commissioner Sands?
I think as far as that goes, really, it depends on where those additional access points are put. And if staff is looking to, is, is really planning ahead and trying to figure out how a city street structure is going to go into those, working with the applicant and spacing it out in such a way that accounts for all those things, I don't... Is there, you know, with, with setbacks and, and right-of-ways, is there any concern with, with subdividing RDP three and plating and having, you know... Is there any planning constraints that would prevent or dictate where that would go? I mean, has anyone laid down anything that says, if we platted out this way, we can fit it, and this is where the access point would go? Not yet, right?
No, not yet. That would happen when it gets annexed, because you never know what this is going to be when it gets annexed. I believe it's going to be low-density residential. We just try to do our best guess. We draw the build-out plans, so that when it does annex, we at least know there's one possible way. It's not so broken up that we can't get sewer lines through without ten different junctures in them. So we just want to make sure things are something that's reasonable.
Commissioner Struckoff?
I, I think the same problems, looking at the, at the layout, I think the same problems with having the access easement between RDP one and two would probably present the same problems with trees having to come down if the driveway came in from the west between those, those two parcels. And my second question, I guess would be for the applicant, is whether, if the variance were granted, whether a condition requiring the removal of one half of the circle drive would be okay with you on the establishment of a, of a third driveway?
A second or... Oh, a third.
Yes, that would be okay. And if you look at a wider map of the area, you can kind of see where future roads may go based on kind of a grid of nearby roads. And I believe that the road may come in off East eight hundred Road. At the back of the property line, there may be a city road there. And then at the west side of the property line, there may be another city road there. I, I wouldn't think that a city road would be this close to the corner of RDP three, even if it were annexed. I think RDP three, if it's annexed, is probably going to become a, could be, I know, maybe low residential, but it could be even a commercial property. The, across the street is a very large tract of land owned by a developer. So I think that RDP three, for me anyway, I'm not doing anything with that property. It's going to be for possible future development, once it's annexed, to figure out what the city may think it would be best served as. So I just thought, for cleanness, getting the driveway approved now, just in case it would, you know, not annexed for twenty years, and somebody wants to do something with it before then, it's available, so.
Thank you.
Before you go, Dr. Marsalino, is there a creek in that stand of...
Yeah, so part of the problem is with East eight hundred Road, that's the start of a creek that goes all the way to Clinton Lake. And so any access point off East eight hundred Road, along that entire section, is going to require a culvert or device to get across that, so.
So, and that road is just a lot busier, so, um, I think any access from that side is not going to be as realistic as, um, the other roads, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Woodley.
I would make a motion if you're ready.
Sure.
Okay. I move that we approve a variance request from Section twenty eight oh four of the subdivision regulations to allow certificate of survey, CSU nineteen five forty-six, on approximately twenty acres located at seven eighty-five North fifteen fifty Road with three access points on North fifteen fifty Road.
We have a motion, do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Sands. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes ten zero. Nine zero. We are missing one, okay. All right, thank you. I'll change my notes. And that brings us to miscellaneous item number two, variance concerning twelve oh one Laura Avenue.
Good evening, Jeff Crick with the City County Planning Office. The item before you this evening is a variance to a right-ofway reduction on Laura Avenue. Uh, property might be familiar before the board, it came recently also as part of a minor subdivision. The applicant is seeking to take the current two lots and combine them into one lot, and currently, as you can kind of see to the north here, there is Twelve Street over here and Laura Avenue on this side. And so to kind of go through the real quick summary of the facts for itself, there, East Twelve Street is a locally designated street, the same as Laura Avenue. Twelve Street is actually constructed off-center, so if you kind of pull it up here on a map, you'll see that it's kind of shifted more towards the north. A portion of that street was vacated in twenty seventeen as part of the original minor subdivision process. The original addition itself was platted in nineteen seventeen, so it's had some track record and history of that configuration. The existing pattern of the streets is typically about fifty feet wide, and as you can see here, Laura Avenue is about fifty feet here. There was the extension, excuse me, the vacation of the right-ofway to the north there, which makes it a fifty-foot right-ofway here, and you have the seventies to kind of give you an idea. You can also see kind of right to the north there, East Twelve Street runs high in that right-ofway, so it's kind of pushing more towards those north boundaries. Uh, so this would be to reduce the right-ofway width from sixty feet to fifty feet along Laura Avenue. Based on the information provided by the applicant in our review of the item, staff would recommend a reduction from those current widths. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on this application.
Thank you, Jeff. The applicant care to speak?
Good evening, Dean Grove, Grove Engineering. Uh, I don't have much to add. I think he did a good job of kind of explaining why the, the vacation of, um, Twelve Street was because of the offset in the road. Um, you know, we went through this process in twenty seventeen and kind of looked at whether the right-ofway needed to be any wider on Laura, and that, that decision was made back then, and so now it's, I guess it was not quite, if you will, what is it codified? So I guess that's what they're asking for to be done tonight, is that kind of officially acknowledging that that right-ofway remains. So I don't have anything else to add, other than if you got questions, I'll be happy to attempt to answer those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grove. Just time we can open this item up to public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, members of the public, we'll bring it back up to the commission. Any questions or comments from any commissioners? Any motions? Commissioner Sands.
I'd like to make a motion to approve variance from Section twenty eight ten E five I of the subdivision regulations for Fairfax Edition number four, MS nineteen five forty-four, located at twelve oh one Laura Avenue, to allow reduced right-ofway width for East Twelve Street and Laura Avenue for Fairfax Edition number four, a minor subdivision, replant of lots one and two, Fairfax Edition number two, subdivision of City Lawrence.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I think I need to read all of it.
Second by Commissioner Struckoff. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes nine zero. That'll bring us back to regular agenda item number one, that consider approving a text amendment, uh, to the design guidelines of Eighth and Penn redevelopment zone. To, actually, is this a, kind of a combined, will be combined presentation on one and two, but we'll keep our discussions separate so Mr., so Commissioner Struckoff can participate in half of it.
So these are two text amendments being requested from the design guidelines of the Eighth and Penn Neighborhood Overlay District, and this district is in the vicinity of Eighth Street, Ninth Street, and Delaware and Pennsylvania. Uh, they were developed in two thousand and six, I believe, as part of an attempt to create a mixed-use district. It was going to be a mixed retail residential use. This shows a subject property, and I will talk about the first text amendment first. That one is asking that the open space designation be removed from that property shown in the bottom of Zone One, in the bottom right-hand corner. The design guidelines include a future land use plan on one page. It shows on the left, this is what our guidelines are recommending today. They see that area on the east side of that block in District One as being historic open space, and so they recommend it to be used as a parking lot. And so the applicant researched the property, they found some historical photographs and other materials showing that it had not always been historic open space. It, it had been the assumption when they wrote the guidelines that it had been mainly a junkyard, and that a parking lot would be a pretty similar use, but the applicant found information showing that it had been developed with buildings. So they sent this information to the State Historical Preservation Officer, who made a finding, and that was included in your packet, that, that, um, open space designation is incorrect. And so then they're asking that that be removed from the guidelines so that it can be developed, and the, um, this graphic would be revised in the guidelines as well to show the development that's being proposed on that right side, the right figure. Um, this is kind of an example of what they're proposing to develop there. These would be work-live units, so they'd be residential units, but they would also have a, a work-live component. Uh, so these are revisions that are being proposed, that figure I showed you, that would be revised, and then the recommendation to develop the southeast corner of the zone with parking would be removed, as well as the statements identifying it as traditional open space. And so staff does recommend approval of this text amendment, uh, removing this designation as open space, allowing it to be developed with this mixed-use project. So the second portion is for the second text amendment, and this is from the height and density limits that are established throughout the district. Uh, we're looking at Zone Three of this overlay district, and that is the property west of Pennsylvania Street, in the eight, the block between the eighth and the ninth streets. The design guidelines were intended to create a retail residential mixed-use district. Um, they were developed in coordination with the property owner at the time, the developer at the time, and it, it had a considerable input from the neighborhood. Now, the property ownership has changed, so there's a new owner, new developer, and he has a different development vision, so rather than creating this just as a retail residential, it's had a lot of artistic additions, so it's considered, it's commonly known as the Warehouse Arts District. It has a lot of art studios, it has retail, it has some event center. And when the, um, transfer of ownership came and the whole development vision revised slightly, is whether or not we still needed the design guidelines, or should they zone out of the Urban Conservation Overlay District? But there's a lot of value in the guidelines. The neighborhood worked with the staff and worked with the applicant to create something that would result in a compatible mixed-use district. So we recognized that there would probably be text amendments as the new development went along, and in two thousand and eleven, there was a text amendment allowing the Polar Building to exceed the density limits in place at the time. And at the time, the regulation said that except for the Polar Mercantile Company building itself, density in the area could not exceed thirty-four units. Prior to that amendment, the density cap was thirty-four units, and that was established on the number of residences they believed could be installed in the Polar Building when it was going to be developed as a retail residential building. With the new developer, the intent was to develop it completely residentially as an affordable housing project, and so they needed more units to make that work. So this text amendment went through allowing greater density for the Polar Building. So now, density for the Polar Building is only limited by the amount of parking that's available. So this shows the kind of development that's being proposed. This is that same graphic you saw, the land use plan from the guidelines on the west, they were proposing separate buildings with a set of row houses, or townhouses in them. And it shows the development in the middle is pretty much a, a block, a, a massive building. They've been working with HRC, the Historic Resource Commission, to create a building that doesn't appear as such a large mass. You can see on the figure on the right, there's undulations in the building size or the areas. Um, in the middle, there's a, a narrow area to give the appearance of two buildings, that's a glass area. And HRC has approved this design, and I believe they've provided a recommendation for you, there was a memo in your packet saying that they did approve that, and they also recommend approval of this amendment. Uh, this shows a figure of it. The applicant indicated that they need additional density in order to make affordable housing work, and the guidelines, when they were originally adopted, they indicated that additional, you needed a certain amount of density in order to make a mixed-use district work. And so it appears you needed a little additional density to make affordable housing. There's a set level at which it actually becomes feasible. You can see this is primarily a three-story building on the, the side on the left here, which would be the south side, and then other side, the north side, is the fourth, the four-story, the taller building. The applicant indicated they could make this all a three-story building if it was all residential, but one of the important components of the Eighth and Penn District is that it's mixed use, and it specifically called out a mixed retail residential use in this area, and that the north portion of this block should be developed with retail. So staff recommended retain the retail, so we have a mixed use, and then ask for the variance from the height. So with their text amendment, they requested sixty-five dwelling units per acre, provided seventy-five percent of the dwelling units qualify as affordable housing per the City of Lawrence criteria. Um, as they went through the project, they discovered they needed fifty-nine dwelling units per acre. And so that is the amount that's being requested in this text amendment, and we're comparing it here with what density the Polar Building was eventually developed at, which is eighty-seven point four dwelling units per acre. So it's still quite a lot less dense than the Polar Building. So as to the height, the guidelines note that the Polar Building should serve as the visual anchor and a reference point for the district, and it should remain the tallest structure in the district, and so they set height limitations. Uh, the Polar Building is, in this figure, it shows it's fifty-five feet, ten inches, and the proposed building is forty-eight feet, which is higher than the guidelines recommend. It's also four stories where the guidelines recommend three stories. Um, the figure at the bottom is a cross-section the applicant provided. It shows the visual view of how the height is. A Polar Building is higher. Um, when you go to the left of the Polar Building, we have, in yellow, that's the Lawrence Beer Company, which is forty-five feet, and then to the west of that, you would have the, um, proposed building, which would be forty-eight feet. So the Polar Building would still remain the tallest building, it'd be a little bit less significantly so, but it would still be the tallest building in the district. And so staff is recommending approval of the text amendments. However, um, the applicant indicated, we would discuss it a little bit more, and he indicated that the City of Lawrence, their affordable housing guidelines are different than the State of Kansas, different from the United States if you're getting federal funding, and so they asked that rather than us tying affordable housing to the City of Lawrence's guidelines, that we tie them to whatever funding requirements that their funding source has, because every, every unity entity that provides funding has a little different way of calculating whether or not you're providing affordable housing. And so we would recommend changing that language that was in the, um, staff report to saying that as long as seventy-five percent of the residential units being affordable, with affordability being determined by the funding source requirements used to create affordable units, and if there's multiple sources, we would use the most stringent requirements, and that way we're not tying them to one particular source, so they can get their funding from the state or the federal and meet those requirements. So the proposed revisions for this, it just revised the building height on page thirteen and the density requirements, and then revised the language, as I just mentioned, for compliance with the funding source requirements. And so staff does recommend approval of this text amendment with that revision I just mentioned. And I'm available for questions. I believe the applicant is here tonight.
Thank you, Mary. The applicant care to discuss your proposal?
Sorry? Yeah.
Do you want to discuss your proposal?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. My name's Patrick Watkins, I'm here on behalf of Tony Kresnick, who is the property owner of record. Um, I think Mary did a nice job of explaining what's going on here. We have two sets of amendments. The, one of them is quite a bit more simple than the other. It's the first one she described, it's the elimination of the o- open space designation. Um, and, and it's quite a bit different than the other one, which is a little more complex, it deals with Penn Street Lofts and affordable housing. So I'll address the open space designation, and then we'll get to the height and density one, just like Mary did. Uh, but the open space designation, when we looked into this property, um, we found that, uh, while this two thousand and six documents referenced this idea that this one corner of Ninth and Delaware was one of the historic open spaces, uh, we scratched our heads. Um, we know that this area was the East Bottoms. These are brick warehouses, this is an industrial space, it's unlikely that any of it would have been open space. So we had, uh, we asked Dennis Domer, uh, local historian, he, he actually put together a, a interesting report, you know, um, not, not small, but we found that, that indeed it was very intensively used, and it's probably unfair to characterize it as open space. Um, into the seventies, we found out that there was a fur trading operation on the corner. There was grocery stores, there were salvage operations. Um, so we, we requested that staff review this report, um, they agreed with us, they sent it on to the State Housing, um, excuse me, the State Historical Office, they agreed with us and sent it on to the National Park Service to have the historic designation reviewed there. We talked to HRC, uh, they agreed with us as well, and they forwarded it to you all. Um, we're pleased to have received pretty well-rounded support for correcting the historical record on this property. Uh, it does enable us to develop it. Um, it's not entirely altruistic, um, but we think it's appropriate to remove the designation just because of historical fact. I will note that you all will get the opportunity to review this project, Delaware Live Work at Ninth and Delaware and Penn Street Lofts, when those applications get to you. Today, we're just talking about very small text amendments that precede those development oper, um, applications, but we do look forward to bringing those both before you. I can take questions on the open space after, after this. Um, the, the height and density amendments, also, uh, Mary did a nice job explaining those, but some context is, is helpful here. In two thousand and seventeen, I believe, um, in coordination with the City Commission, who passed a resolution in support of Tony's application, the Kansas Housing, uh, and Resources Corporation, he applied for, uh, LIHTC credit, low-income housing tax credits. It's the same program that allowed Polar to be developed, same program that allowed Nine Delta to bring affordable housing to East Lawrence. It's a, a, a large federal tax credit program, and Tony has had great success with it. Um, with these districts repurposing warehouses, you have to think dynamically, and you have to think about how to fund them, and the LIHTC credit is an op, a great opportunity, and the city saw that value when it passed a resolution supporting his application. In two thousand and nineteen, his application was funded by the, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, to, to a large degree. Uh, we're looking at, uh, seven million dollars plus of tax credits. It's a large allocation, one of the larger ones you'll see for Douglas County, uh, and it's a great opportunity for, um, affordable housing in Lawrence. The application was crafted to fit squarely within the first goal, short-term goal of the housing study that, that the Affordable Housing Board put together. So we're pleased to be able to bring that application to you all when it gets here. Uh, the text amendment, though, is something that we have to get over before that. So we wanted to be sensitive in the ways that we crafted the compromise on raising density and raising height, so we tied them specifically to affordable housing, and we think it's a, a dynamic way to not just lift density, not just lift height, they just lifted density on Polar. You have, if you're going to get the added benefit of the density and the height, uh, you have to bring affordable housing, and we're limited in the amount to what our application for development now requires. I will note that we've had a, a, a very thorough review with the HRC, um, Representative Lynn Zollner. Um, we started with an application that had seventy-one units. Um, we're down to forty-seven, which is acceptable, but some compromises had to be made, and, and that's where we ended up. We've also had a, a good, um, discussion with HRC, who approved this text amendment, uh, and has approved, um, all but some very minor details on the actual design of the building, which is also great news. Um, so we're pleased to have received staff's report and HRC report, and so we're bringing this to you all for your support, uh, so that we may go to the City Commission with these slight increases, uh, to, uh- slight increases to, I shouldn't call them slight, they're, they're modest increases in, in density and height to the city commission, so we can bring some more affordability, affordable housing options to East Lawrence. I'll stand for questions. It's a dynamic project, and sometimes it's difficult to process all of this. I think it is important to know that you'll get a great opportunity to see the renderings, the design, and get into the details of, of the project, hopefully in the next month or two.
Thank you. Probably will be questions. Now, we're going to divide this up into the two separate items. So first, we'll take public comment on Agenda Item Number One, which is to remove the historic open space designation. Any members of the public wish to comment on that? Seeing none, we'll bring Item One back up to the commissioner. Any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Willie.
How come we didn't get Dennis Domer's report to read in our bag? 600 pages isn't enough for us for one evening. I'm a fan of his work, so I'd be actually happy to read that document, but not for
Any additional comments? I don't see any problem with going forward with removing that designation, since it appears the designation was an error to begin with, and it's been approved, you know, reviewed all the way up to the federal level. So Commissioner Struckoff?
I remove, I move that we approve the proposed amendment to the design guidelines of the Eighth and Penn Neighborhood Redevelopment Zone, and remove the open space designation for the location at Ninth and Delaware.
The motion, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion on the motion?
Do you have a quick question on the, if I understand that right, we can have an open space designation and a parking lot as open space?
Yeah, it's open space, but it's not green space. So the term they were using was just that it wasn't, didn't have buildings.
Does that have to do with height?
I don't know, I'm not in, I don't know much about historical designations, so I don't know. But I do know they just, I think it was more the openness, that, yeah, that it wasn't something there.
Actually, my question about just open space, I mean, what would have to be there for it not to be open space under our code?
What would have to be there for it not to be open space?
So a parking lot works, what else?
Well, a park would work. There's not many things that would work, actually. Anything where you put a building wouldn't work. So it really limits the use, and I think that's why they showed a parking lot. Recreational area, you know, just nothing where you build anything.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor. Passes 9-0. Go to Agenda Item Number Two. Wait for Mr. Struckoff to exit the room. This time, we'll open Agenda Item Number Two for public comment. Any members of the public wish to comment on Agenda Item Number Two? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the commission. Any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Sands.
Mary, can you bring up the comparison of the, the density chart? Just want to take another look at it, that's all. Mary, can you explain again the affordability criteria? Just, so we take the most stringent of between federal, state, or city of Lawrence, or is it just between federal and state?
And city, right. We would look at all three of them. And the applicant explained it to me, he may be able to tell you better, but it was that they all look at it differently. Some, some put a set percentage, some let you average, and so he said it's just really hard to do a project just based on one set of criteria when you're trying to get funding from another source.
Pat, come on.
Yeah, it's a good question. I should have addressed it in, in my presentation, because, because we brought it to Mary. It's our fault that this standard was written that, excuse me, that we refer to the city standard. We requested that, now we'd like to refer to whatever standard governs the project. The city standard calls for a technical requirement of what's called 110 percent of fair market value rents based upon HUD. The 2017 tax law allows us to do something called income averaging. It wasn't allowed when probably that city standard was written. But income averaging is dynamic. It lets you rent to people that just graduate out of the affordability standards, so you can continue to rent to people that deserve to have some affordability allowed to them, and it, and it allows you to create a new criteria for, for especially low-income folks, and set their rental rates at especially low income, so long as all of it averages under 60 percent of what's of AMI, average income. It's quite technical, but it's, it's overall a great thing. The city standards, just to be blunt, aren't quite as comprehensive as what the, the federal tax law requires. These LIHTC projects have to go through a, a full range of audits, not only for construction, but to ensure that all of the tenants meet the eligibility requirements, and that your, your rental rates are falling within the, the federal government's standards. So I don't, I don't consider this technical revision of the amendment to be a bad thing for the city or the developer. It just puts them both on the same page. It allows the developer to say, okay, you know what? I've got these difficult standards to meet with the federal LIHTC process. If we're going to get an increased density bonus, let's just say that we have to meet those standards that are funding this project. If we happen to get state funding separate that has a different standard, or the city's funding separate, and it has a different standard, we'll comply with the most stringent of all standards. But rest assured, I mean, I think it's more of a, an issue just with the, the words in the city's code that may not be quite up to date with the, the newest versions of the tax code. I wish I could be less technical about this, but it's quite a complicated issue. You have eligibility for tenants, and then you have rental rates for tenants, all, both of which are set by federal standards, and there's quite a bit of compliance that require, that's required for projects like this. It requires a special property manager that's based usually in, in Kansas City or Wichita, just to comply with the federal standards. I apologize if that was too much.
Mr. Watkins, I, I, it's a little over my head, but I, to be fair, if we had the minimum standard for the city, why is that not good enough for, if we just said that
instead of complicating it to a formula that it sounds like you understand and maybe the rest of us don't, if we just had that minimum city standard and then let you do whatever you needed to do for funding, or what's the issue with that?
Yeah, the, the city standard says that the unit must meet the 110 percent threshold. Well, this is an income averaging project. That means that instead of just having this 60 percent standard, we're going to use the average of all units. If it was one unit, we could certainly comply with this. The average of all of our units certainly complies with it. But because we're going to be renting to those extra-low-income people at a very low rental rate, we're going to rent to people at 70 and 80 percent of AMI. Those people that just have graduated out of affordability, you know, in part due to the fact that they do have a nice lower income rental rate to meet, they get above 60 percent that used to not be able to rent to those people. So income averaging lets you go up to, to 80 percent of AMI, but also requires that you lower it down to 30 and 40 percent. We'll have units that rent for $375 a month, including utilities. So it, it gets a broader range of people. But if you were to read the city's guidelines, and you were to apply that guideline to each individual unit, not taking into account the whole, probably five or six of those units, you could say, don't meet the 110 percent. So we wanted to make sure that the application was fair. We thought about a couple of different, different ways to skin this. The, the large amount of words that we came up with at the end isn't the most easy to understand, but that's the tech, that's why we thought it was important to clarify this. If you want to enforce this provision, are you going to look at the whole project and make sure that all of our units on average meet the requirement? Or are you going to pick off one, or two, or three here and say, why are you guys above 110 percent on those? So we, we wanted fair enforcement. Again, I don't think it's a bad thing for the city necessarily, but it certainly sounds bad.
So is that information, then, that you will provide to the city with the various low rentals and high rental to make sure that you're compliant with the code?
Yeah, the city is certainly going to have access to, we're, we're going to be asking for an NRA and an IRB. We're also going back to Ahab to ask for funds from them. They, they can have access to all of the auditing and, and information, and we'll, we'll supply them proof that we are meeting the intention of the city's guideline. It, it's not a problem there.
Thank you.
Just one more question.
Commissioner Sands.
But to meet the, the AMI, you've got, who reports that to the federal government? The project developer?
That's right, through, through a property manager.
So the feds get the...
Commissioner Willie.
Mr. Watkins, don't go. So has this project already been through Ahab and has their recommendation, or is this something that you're planning to bring back to them after you've met a couple of benchmarks with, like, these processes?
Yeah. Ahab had a couple of requests for applications for funding. We applied on, on both of them. The first one, we told them, you know, we just want to introduce the project, don't worry about us this time in June. In December, we came back and we asked for funding, and we weren't picked. And there's a couple of explanations given to us for why we weren't picked. We certainly feel like we had the strongest project, and, and we plan to go back to Ahab and request them a special accommodation. We haven't yet, though. Ahab is not, they're, they're receiving the sales tax funding, and then they're setting sort of benchmarks when you can apply. So we, we applied for the first time and, and passed. We applied for the second time and didn't, didn't receive it. So that's where we stand right now. Ahab doesn't have a role in approving this project further unless we want their money.
Okay. And is June their next request for proposals?
They haven't said it yet. They, they indicated it might be December.
Okay. Would you say that the way you're asking for your, the income structure would provide a better mixed-income project than what was originally suggested? So in terms of the, the product that you're proposing?
Than we originally requested from?
In our original document, so. And just because you're asking for the income averaging instead of, you know, strictly that the, that the, that each unit be less than 60 percent AMI, by getting all those words right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
It's, it's sort of an apples and oranges. We're going to comply with the income averaging. That's what our application for the federal tax credits calls for. That's the best, that's the best standard to use. I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing. Overall, again, if you took all of the units and averaged them out, we're going to be below that 110 percent. We didn't want any questions in the enforcement of this. If they look at Unit 301, and it's at 80 percent, because we're renting two at 30 percent, we don't want to say that 80 percent units unfairly, you know, above the criteria set in this one condition for density. It's, it's better, in my opinion, than what the city standard would be, not only for the developer, but for the city. Broader audience, more lower-income folks, and generally an easier application for the property manager.
And have you shared that perspective with Ahab for their consideration, that, that this might be a better model that you're suggesting?
It, it was part of our application to Ahab. This city standard only got brought up because I put it in the text amendment.
Okay.
Please don't go.
I, I should note one, one other thing. We did meet with, we have been meeting with East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. We've met with them, I think, four times. This last meeting, they agreed they would write a letter, both in support and with some concerns. I think that's about as good as you can do in East Lawrence for a development project, but they are, they, they did discuss this, the text amendments at their last meeting. They specifically said that there, there didn't seem to be large objection to the text amendments. And, and I don't know if anybody is here from ELMA tonight, but I think that's also noteworthy.
There obviously isn't. Otherwise, we probably would have heard from somebody. But for me, I mean, all the talk about, you know, affordable housing and the tax credits and everything else are kind of a little bit beyond just the basic request, which is a text amendment to increase density and increase the height. So a lot of the affordable housing component is based on your ability to get the appropriate funding and tax credits, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so if you fail to get those, what happens to this property which has a text amendment with increased density and height limitations?
I would note that the, the amendments are specifically crafted so that they're only used if you have affordable housing. So we would, I mean, it, it is, the design guidelines, if we don't get the tax credits, the design guidelines allow a three-story apartment complex.
So essentially, we have, we have a conditional text amendment.
Yeah, that's the way we crafted it. We thought it was a dynamic way to solve this issue. We didn't want to just lift the lid. They did that on Polar.
All right, so if the affordable housing component fails, it would be a three-story apartment complex?
You won't see anything on, on this property probably immediately.
But that's, that's kind of the fallback that's being...
No, we won't, this property won't develop probably with this owner, to be honest. I, I don't know what would happen to the property. Again, the design guidelines call for a mixed-use apartment complex. So you wouldn't necessarily need to go through a whole lot of planning. You could art, you could theoretically do that at, at your right.
All right, thanks. I guess my next question is staff. So if the affordable housing component fails, what we would have in place is a text amendment that would permit mixed-use apartment and retail or other mixed use, is that correct?
Well, if the affordable housing fails, you would just have the kind of development our guidelines recommend now, because you only get the increased height, and you only get the increased density if it is affordable housing.
Right. But that would be three stories, then, in this area?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the density could be more than 34 dwelling units an acre.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Any other questions for staff? Any discussion? Commissioner Willie.
Just the comment that, that the height that's being proposed doesn't bother me visually for that area, and it still honors the Polar Building as kind of being that anchor point. I, I, I think it would all fit reasonably well for the area.
Anyone else? Anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Ashworth.
I move that we approve the proposed amendment to the design guidelines, Eighth and Penn Neighborhood Redevelopment Zone, Article Three of the Land Development Code, revising the density and height limits for, for, in Zone Three of the district, the southwest corner of Pennsylvania Street and East Eighth Street, forwarding to the Lawrence City Commission with a recommendation for approval based on the findings of fact outlined in the staff report.
Motion.
Would that change?
Pardon?
With the change suggested.
She said that the change...
No, I...
Can we clarify? I'm not sure we heard, but with the change that was suggested by staff?
With the change that was suggested by staff.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ashworth. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Carter. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes 8-0. Okay. As I think our next item is going to be rather lengthy, and we're going to have a lot of public comment, I propose we take a 10-minute break at this time. So we will reconvene at 8:45.
Seven.
All right, we'll reconvene with agenda item number three to consider approving a text amendment to revise and update the zoning regulations of the unincorporated portion of the county.
Good evening, Mary Miller. And I apologize in advance, it's kind of a long presentation, so you'll probably have seen as much of me as you want to today. But this is a text amendment. We're proposing revisions to the zoning regulations. It's actually a complete update. The zoning regulations will be called the zoning regulation, zoning and land use regulations. So they're being completely revised. And then some associated changes that are necessary to the subdivision regulations. So we'll break the presentation into three parts. First, we'll talk about the zoning and land use regulations. And then we'll talk about the subdivision regulations that are changing. And then the last thing will be a consistency review of how the revisions comply with Plan 2040. And I'll just go through primarily section by section. We have Article 12-301, that's the introductory provisions. So we're combining three sections that we have in the current code. And we're going to add general rules of interpretation. And for instance, what do you do if the fraction, you have a fraction, or what do you do if the word is a plural? So we have general rules, how to interpret the regulations. And also adding transitional provisions. So if you have an application that's in the process, you submitted an application today and then we're working on the regulations, it tells you that your application would go ahead and be processed under the existing code we have today. You wouldn't have to switch. So if you, whatever you apply under, those are the regulations your application is processed under. Now, the same thing if you have a violation. If you had a violation today, it would continue unless the revised regulations remove that violation. So we have those transitional provisions to explain what will happen when the new regulations get adopted. In that section, we also explain the agricultural exemption. Kansas is a right-to-farm state, so we cannot regulate agriculture. Except for a few provisions, agriculture is subject to the floodplain regulations and it's also subject to the setbacks along roads. And so we've added that to make it clear, because right now it's understood, but it's not actually stated anywhere in the sub, in the zoning regulations. And we also include the process. If you have an agricultural building, you're exempt from the need to get a building permit. But it doesn't exactly state that in zoning regulations today, or how do you find out if you are exempt? There's a permit you fill out with the zoning and codes office. And they have criteria they use to determine. If you're going to be using this building for agricultural uses, then you don't need to get a building permit. And that way, they can let the person know if you ever intend to convert it, it would be best to get a building permit now and build it that way. So it protects the agricultural exemption, but it also gives people a little heads up about what to expect if they're intending to convert it later. Section 302 is a list of all the zoning districts. It discusses where the zoning map is and what the general provisions are. It just replaces our current Article 304. And so we'll go through some of the zoning districts and how we intend to convert them. With the new regulations, there'll be new names for the districts. That way, it's just less confusing. When we refer to them, we'll know we're referring to the districts after the adoption of these regulations. Currently, we have an agriculture district and a valley channel district. This is the agricultural rural zoning that's primarily not residential. It will convert to two zoning districts. The Ag One will be what we call the true agricultural district, or the district that's primarily intended for agriculture. Parcels that are 20 acres or more will be in this district. If you're a parcel of less than 20 acres and you're currently zoned A or Valley Channel, your zoning would convert to Ag Two, or what we call transitional Ag. This one is more similar to the Ag zoning of today. It'll be very similar. Today, we have A One, or the suburban home residential district, and the R One, the single-family residential. These are platted subdivisions. They're residential, they're primarily supposed to be in the UGA, but we have some that were approved outside of the urban growth area. And these will convert to the Ag One, Ag Two, or CP, depending upon the size of the parcels. Most of those, I would assume, would go to CP, especially if they're in the urban growth area. And then Lone Star Lake, the agricultural zoning that's in Lone Star Lake area, I think you heard a text amendment about that last year, that that's going to convert to the Lone Star Lake district. Because those lots are very small, they don't comply with any of the agricultural lot standards. And so they've had meetings with the people, the public in Lone Star Lake area, and that will convert. And I'll show you a map of that area shortly. The B Three District is a district that, if you look through the permitted uses, it is primarily intended for the motoring public and primarily around the lake areas. We're just going to rename that to the lake-oriented business district. And then we're combining B One and B Two. These are the neighborhood business and the general business, just combining them into the GB or general business district. Rural tourism will keep its name, we'll just take out the hyphen. It's not used very often and primarily, it'll stay basically the same. A lot of these changes are based on the Duncan Diagnostic. This was done in 2000 in preparation for when the city was revising the Land Development Code. They worked on the Land Development Code and reviewed the county zoning regulations and they made some recommendations. One of them was to create a true agricultural district, which we are doing with the Ag One District. And the other one was to combine some of our districts. They didn't feel that with the amount of industry we have in the county, we actually needed four industrial districts. And so I One and I Two would be combined into the light industrial district. And I Three and I Four would be combined into general industrial. And then we're proposing a new district, which would be the V, the village district. No properties will convert to the village district with the adoption of these regulations. However, following the adoption of the regulations, it would be possible to rezone to the village district. Other floodway and the floodway fringe districts, there's no changes being proposed to those. Those were adopted, I think, in 2015, and there's no changes necessary. These are the overlay zoning districts. We have an EWP overlay district. That's a Udora Water Source Protection overlay district. We're not proposing any changes to that because that's established by Udora. I don't believe the map is actually on our zoning map right now, but that will be added so that everyone can see it. And then the airspace overlay district. Our current regulations talk about the airport hazard district. They tell you to go to the zoning and codes office and they'll help you find what the requirements are. And then the requirements are basically in the City of Lawrence Land Development Code. And so with these regulations, we're putting those requirements in the zoning regulations so they're available to everyone. Because a lot of the land in the airspace overlay district or the airport hazard district is outside the city limits. So it'd be good for that information to be available for everyone. And this actually is a map of the ASO or the airspace overlay district. Primarily, they look at height. Height is limited from the distance of the runways. So where the red is, height is pretty much limited there. However, as you get further away, you're basically looking at elevators, silos, and then further on, you're looking at cell towers. It wouldn't affect most of the regular structures in the county. But the FAA has approved this overlay district, and so it helps people to, when they determine what they want to build or where we want to see cell towers located. And this is a map showing the Udora Water Source Protection Plan. It's two miles radius from their water source wells. And there are just recommendations, there's certain requirements they have in that overlay district if you're doing a certain use. For instance, the sand pit at Penny Sand Pit east of town, they have to comply with their water protection standards. If they have an oil spill, there's certain measures they have to take to take care of that. And then Section 303 has more specific information about the various zoning districts. Each district is listed along with its purpose and intent. And then the dimensional standards are there. The current regulations have a very nice chart where all the districts show their dimensional standards. Unfortunately, it also has a Section 305 where there's the base setback, which is an entirely different part of the regulations. And it's very easy for people to not even know it's there, including new staff almost never know to look there. And then it's just very, when we add that to the chart, it just got too complicated. The text had to be too small. So we've divided it so if you want to look at what the dimensions are for a zoning district, you go to that district and it's a very easy to read chart. And as I mentioned, we're basing this off the recommendations of the Duncan Diagnostic, and that was included in your packet. And we've noted where we've met what they've recommended. Creating the true agricultural district with one dwelling unit per 20 to 40 acres is what they recommend. We're choosing the one dwelling unit for 20 acres. And so we've divided the A District into Ag One and Ag Two. And so if you have an Ag One District and you have one dwelling unit for 20 acres, but you'd like to do more, today, you just do a certificate of survey and divide your land. In the future, you would do a rezoning request. It would have a public hearing, neighbors would be notified, the land would be evaluated. You know, is it suitable to divide it or should it remain agricultural? And then if it gets rezoned to Ag Two, then they could do the certificate of surveys just like they do today. And I'll just illustrate this for a moment. This is an area in the northwest portion of the county, and this shows the zoning map with no parcels on it. And the blue is the agricultural zoning. The A One is the suburban residential home. And then we have some bluish-green, which is B Two or general business. So looking at this, you would think it was primarily an agricultural county. We have an agricultural area. But when we put the parcels on, we can see that this is not primarily agriculture. Some of these parcels could still be farmed, but it's been divided for development. So the proposal, this is what the proposed map would look like. So the proposal, this is what the proposed map would look like. Ag 2 would be the yellow area, showing these areas are not necessarily agricultural properties. The blue areas would be Ag 1, and then the red area would still be the general business district. This allows us to get a better idea of how much Ag land do we have. If we wanted to do a query in our GIS, we could get the number of acres we have that are over 20, and we could monitor the amount of agricultural land we have, how much are we losing? And this is a link. It'll go live, it's not live right now, because we're still working with the GIS people. But if I go to this link, it'll show that map I just showed you. You can go to any property, and just a moment, I'll just see if I can pull it up easily. We want to make sure we have no errors, or as few errors as possible, before this goes live. But for instance, you can zoom in on a property. It'll zoom in on both maps. And so you can see the zoning, the current zoning on the one side, and then how it would be zoned on the other. So when this is, we expect to be ready to go in just a few days. We'll put it on the county website, but a person could go look and say, here's how I'm zoned now, here's how I would be zoned, and showing all the conversions, which will be very handy. We've been working with the county GIS to get this up and going. And then we're recommending a district called the clustered preservation district. This is a district where those clustered certificates of survey could occur. It's some land that's currently zoned A1 or R1, it'll only be in the UGA, and it allows greater density. The Ag 2 district, you can have two dwelling units for 20 acres. In this district, you can have more. You can do residential development parcels. One change we're making to the subregs is we're changing the name of that, and it's a little confusing. But today, when you do a cluster, or certificate of survey, you're creating a parcel for only residential purposes. If you decided you wanted a different purpose on that parcel, you wanted a church rather than a home, you would have to go in and plat it. And so we don't want to have the use tied to the type of land division you did. So the name is going to be changed to rural development parcels, and you could use it for a house or a church. You don't need to go in and change if you've platted, or what your land division is based on your type of use. And so in the clustered preservation, you can make four of these, what would be called rural development parcels, with a certificate of survey. But we're putting a limit of four. If you want to do more than that, then you will have to plat. In 2006, when the subregs were adopted, they took away plating for residential purposes, and we're putting it back in. We found that the certificates of survey work really well, as long as there's just a few parcels. But we've had some that have up to 20 parcels, all sharing one shared drive, and a lot of times, the property owners, people buying the property, aren't aware that they're responsible for maintaining that drive. And so this lets people have the option of plating. If you want more than four RDPs, it's a requirement to plat, and that gives them the option of creating a public road. If the county and the township agree that they'll accept a public road, then it eliminates that need for those large shared drives. And so we did receive some public comment. We sent out a letter about the idea to do a village zoning district, and told people that we were thinking of it, and that their property was in one of the incorporated towns, to get their idea of what they would think. So this is the Big Springs area. The red outlined area is what we identify as, what we feel would be the village boundaries. So if a village district was approved, following the adoption of the zoning regulations, we would talk to these property owners and see if they were interested in rezoning, and come back with a request to rezone to the village district if they were interested. If not, it would convert, as you would see in that conversion map, it would just, B2 would become GB or general business, and A would probably be Ag 2, because of the smaller parcels. Similarly, we have Clinton. This is the boundaries we see. It's possible, when we talk to people, some of them may not feel they belong in the village district, maybe some of the adjacent properties feel they do, the boundaries might change. But the rezoning would occur after the adoption of the regulations. We're not rezoning property today, we're just converting zoning districts. So the B3 here would convert to the LB, or the lake-oriented business, and all of the A would convert to Ag 2, transitional agriculture. This is a map of the Lone Star Lake district that's being proposed. The intent is primarily, Zoning and Codes identified a problem with these, they, none of them met the lot standards, all the structures were non-conforming, so almost any kind of development required a variance in the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so to avoid that, and to make development easier, they proposed this new district. And so that's been adopted, and that'll just happen with these regulations. Section 304 is a permitted use table. This is another of the recommendations of the diagnostics. It's very similar to the permitted use table you see in the Development Code of the city. It has a list of uses, it's divided into sections. If it's noted as an A in the permitted use table, it means it can only be accessory. If it's a P, it means it's permitted. It might be permitted, basically, the things that are permitted by rider, agriculture or residences. You don't need to get a site plan for those, you just get a building permit for your residence. Anything else, most of the time, if it's got a P, it means it just needs site plan approval. Anything with a C would take a conditional use permit approval. And then we have use-specific standards, and so the aspects would show that you would need to go find the use-specific standard, and we would have those in the final column. Our use-specific standards aren't listed in the final column right now, because we've been making changes, and we've had to adapt them, and most of those were incorrect by the time we got ready to come to the meeting. So the final step would be to put the correct citations in that column, so a person could look and see, what are my use-specific standards for these uses? So this shows that, for instance, a commercial grain storage would be a commercial, conditional use permit in each of the Ag districts. That's not a agricultural grain storage, if you wanted a seed storage facility, a seed distribution facility, and grain elevator, a commercial grain elevator. Same with a commercial riding stable. And one of the reasons that we're trying to create these use tables, or recreate specific uses per each district, is so that our commercial districts are commercial, and our industrial districts are industrial. And then, it's easier for us to say, we have so many acres of industrial land in the county. Today, if we say how much industrial land we have in the county, we might be saying how much land we have, but half of it could be developed residentially. And this just gives you an example of how the general business district, how the uses are. In the general business district today, you're allowed every use that's listed as a general business district use, every use that's listed as a neighborhood business use, and every use that's listed as a single-family residential use, and all the conditional uses in the zoning regulations. So we have a wide array of uses. So the general business district could be developed with a use, with many uses, and a lot of them would not be commercial uses. So it's our goal to create a district that actually is a commercial district. If you're zoned commercially, you would be developed with the commercial uses. If you want to develop residentially, you would get one of the residential uses, districts such as Ag 2, CP for clustered preservation or village. And so that's why we're looking at the uses and suggesting changes to some of these uses, to refine them, and to make them more specific to that zoning district. 121305 are additional dimensional standards, in addition to the ones that are in each zoning district. One of the things that the county engineer suggested we add is a site distance information. So people developing at corners will leave enough distance for the site distance, we don't have that right now, so this graphic is in the regulations. One change we're making is with agritourism. Agritourism was developed, it was intended to encourage agritourism throughout the county, but primarily on agricultural land. So agritourism is a use that's permitted throughout the county, but if you want to qualify for the administrative process, there's a, you can just go to the Zoning and Codes and get approved administratively, or you can go to the County Commission, you don't have to come to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. Those are being restricted now, just to land that's agriculture, working farms, or working ranches. So if you don't have farmland, and you want to do an agritourism use, that would require a conditional use permit, and would come before you. So it kind of gives the, we're encouraging it more on the working farms. Another use-specific standard, I don't know if many of you were here years ago, we discovered that the Zoning and Codes Director at the time said that camping was not permitted on personal property. And so most of the commissioners said, we need to change that, and so we were directed to change it, and this is what we've came up with. Camping is allowed throughout the county. We do have family and personal camping, we noted that's allowed almost anywhere. It does have time limits, you know, up to 14 days, unless you have a permit from the Zoning and Codes Director. And we have special event campgrounds. So if you're having a special event, and you want camping right now, special events specifically state, no camping, that would be removed, and you'd be allowed to camp as long as you, you know, meet these standards. A primitive campground and developed campgrounds are allowed. They usually require conditional use permits, unless they're in the lake-oriented business or one of the business districts. So if you weren't here before with the previous camping discussions, you might not have been aware that we had a shortage of camping standards, but we have them now. And then 1306, 307, I'm sorry, is the development process. The current regulations, they just were added on to and added on to as time went on, they were adopted in 1966. And so we had zoning regulations, how to do a zoning in one section, how to do a site plan in another. This section combines all the development processes in one place. And then we also note that we may require studies. A lot of times in the county, you don't need studies, but depending upon the location, the county engineer can request and require a traffic study, he can require a drainage study, depending upon what's, what use you're proposing, and kind of what area you're in. We've received a lot of public comments that they'd like to see the notification range increased. We're recommending increasing it from 1,000 feet to a quarter mile, which at once, Alvin's in 320 feet, but that could be increased to a half mile or a mile. That's part of the process, depending on what kind of comments are received. Today, you can do a site plan for a building without notifying any adjacent property owners. And we, we did have a school go in, came through, had a site plan, and then later, we received calls from people, because construction was happening right next door to them, and they had no idea a school had been approved. We're adding mailed notice to the site plan, so just like in the city, if you want to do a site plan at a school, or a church, or whatever your building, you have to mail out notice, so neighbors aren't going to be surprised, they have time to put their input into whatever's happening. We're also including posted notice. Right now, we mail notice of the planning commission meetings, but we'll have posted notice, they'll, yeah, same yellow signs, they'll put out on their property. So perhaps you don't live near it, but you drive by it every day, then you'll be alerted to it as well. So just improving the notification in the county and increasing public participation. The nonconformity section, right now, is basically talking about nonconforming uses. We're revising it to clear up the nonconforming uses, and also add specific information about nonconforming structures and nonconforming lots, just modernizing this section quite a bit. The BZA has a wide range of uses today. They can do use variances, they can approve uses that are not allowed in the district, they can approve temporary conditional use permits, they can do special use exceptions, and the code says they're the ones that determine the classification of uses when the classification is unclear. And a lot of these powers, they just don't even exercise. So with this revision, we're just going to reduce their powers to the same, just approving variances and hearing appeals of administrative decisions. We don't have a sign code board, because the sign code is included in our zoning regulations, so they would also hear variances from the sign requirements. 310 relates to the certificates of occupancy and building permits. That was revised minorly, just for compliance with current building code. Vadded, we've updated the section on parking and loading. Basically, every use in that use table will be assigned a parking group, and then you could look here and see what their parking requirements are. That way, each use has a specific parking requirement. Right now, we have about 13 uses that have parking requirements, and then we have to say, well, what use do we think you're more similar to? And this will just remove that, it'll be very clear what your parking requirements are. There were no changes to the floodplain management regulations, and minimum changes to Section 12 dash 313 about violations, penalties, and enforcement. Zoning and Codes made some revisions to update it to reflect their current practices. And then 314 is general standards. We had the use-specific standards in Article 6, where if you have a use, just standards that apply specifically. If you have a dog kennel, we have uses about where it can be, how far can the runs be from property lines, those kind of standards. Here, we have just general standards, signage. The Supreme Court ruling last year, which just made us need new signage standards, so we worked with the county counselor, and they helped us come up with new signage rules that is compliant with the Supreme Court decision. The environmentally sensitive lands protection standards, we have those in the subregs. So when you divide land, you have to protect the sensitive lands. It's not in our zoning regulations, so when you do a site plan or conditional use permit, there's no requirement to protect those environmentally sensitive lands, so we're adding that. We do have the, a limit. You don't have to protect every piece of your property. If it's all covered with trees, we set the maximum limit at 40%, and we base that on the 40% future development area, and thought that it was reasonable, it would still allow people land to develop while maintaining protection of a lot of their property. There are some properties, some features are protected by other entities. Stream corridors are protected by the Division of Water Resources, floodplain is protected by FEMA, wetlands by the Army Corps of Engineers. If that's all you have on your property, you may have to protect more than 40%. But if it's just what we're regulating, we would limit our ability to restrict your development to 40, no more than 40% of your property. We included lighting standards. Right now, we have just limited lighting standards, so we kind of beefed them up. We do intend to add more. We don't have anything for LED lighting, or wildlife habitat lighting standards, and we've had members of the public contact us with information, they'd like to see us work on these. We just couldn't get those done in time for these revisions. And one of your communications was from one of those individuals interested in the lighting, and he had some recommendations for additional lighting changes. But we will be bringing back an amendment, maybe not super quickly, but we will bring it back with some standards for LED lighting, because that's what most people are using today, so we need to get some good standards for those. So that was the zoning regulations. So we have to make some changes to the subdivision regulations to work with that. We have the Ag 1 district, we're proposing maximum density of one dwelling per 20 acres. And you don't need to do a certificate of survey to divide land to that degree. If you have 40 acres, you can do what we are calling a agricultural subdivision boundary survey. It's a survey, you work with Zoning and Codes to make sure you meet the frontage requirement, you work with the county surveyor to make sure your survey is proper, and then you record it, and then you have a buildable lot. So it makes division easier, even though your density is restricted. We also included the ability to divide, if you build a house, or you want to build a house on it, on just three acres, you don't want it the old 20 acres. You can do a natural resource agricultural protection agreement on the remainder of the property, and you can divide off that three acres for the house, and that way, the remainder of it could be used for farming, it could be sold to a farmer to farm. But we protect the density with that agreement. There could be no more than one dwelling unit on those 20 acres, one principal dwelling unit. The Ag 2 limits the density to two dwelling units per 20 acres. And today, our certificates of survey, you can only do two, unless if you're on a local road, in which case you can do three. We're taking away that bonus of three, and just leaving it to two as the maximum, so we have that density of two per 20 acres. And as I mentioned, at the clustered preservation, you can have up to four certificate of survey. And density is really governed by the sanitary code, you can go down to three acres, provided it's three acres outside of the floodplain. If you do more than four resident, or rural development parcels, that'll be called, you'll have to plat. And so I mentioned earlier that we're going to try to change the name from residential development parcel to rural development parcel. Rezoning will be required prior to land division, so if you're in an Ag 2 district, and you're in the UGA, and you want to develop more dense than two dwelling units for 20 acres, your first step would be to rezone to the CP, your clustered preservation district. Once you're rezoned, then you could do the certificate of survey or the plat. There's no more, well, the plating could require a planning commission meeting, and then the public would get noticed, but you could divide it through a certificate of survey without notifying neighbors. The rezoning is where we really evaluate the land and look at it ahead of time to see, should it be divided? Plats will also require the future build-out plans. That's just because the lots will be large, we want to make sure we're allowing for future division when it gets annexed into the city, and this is in the UGA. And then environmentally sensitive lands have been revised to include native prairies and prime farmland. And so, you know, you require to protect it up to the 40% of the total site. So in the Ag 1 district, I'm sorry, I already said that. So this is an example of how the Ag 1 district can be divided. You have 50 acres, and you want to create two buildable lots, you can divide it into a 20-acre, and a 30, or a 25, and a 25, as long as you don't go below a 1 20-acre parcel, and this can be done just with a agricultural subdivision boundary survey. This shows, if you do the natural resource agricultural protection agreement, you can divide off that parcel with the house. That way, a person who just wants to live in the country isn't required to own 20 acres, that could be owned by the neighbor who'd like to farm it, or by someone else, as long as its development potential is restricted with that agreement. If the property is rezoned, the agreement would dissolve. So if they come in, they say, I'd like to rezone to Ag 2 and divide it further, that's when that protection agreement would dissolve, could send when that protection agreement would dissolve, because then you could develop it. It would also dissolve whenever the property's annexed. So this shows the rural certificates of survey that would be possible on the Ag Two transitional agricultural districts. It's the same as today, two dwellings per twenty acres, and it also has that ability to divide off the house. We've had some people that wanted to divide twenty acres, they wanted to build just one house or two houses, and we had one that had a lot of floodplain, they really did not want that on the residential parcel, but they, we had no options, you had to create two RDPs, that's all you could create. Today, you could create your RDP, the other RDP, and you could divide it with that agricultural resource protection agreement. You could end up with a parcel for your house, it's a separate parcel that doesn't have any floodplain. And so it, it helps people be able to divide and use the land they want while not exceeding the density. Some people want to divide it like that for mortgage purposes, banks would rather just limit on smaller acreage, and so it'd also take care of that issue. This is just an image of the cluster, the certificate of survey, this is pretty much what we have today, it's just showing that it's limited to the four rural development parcels. We did receive public comment, and a lot of it was included in your package, you had the table of comments that we received before the staff report was finished, and then we received some letters afterwards. Received several comments that the general business district should include residential uses. Also, that the lake-oriented business should include a mini-storage use as a conditional use permit. And that's like a Judy's Junction, there is a large boat and mini-storage facility there, that would convert to B three, and so this was a very good comment, that would really be good to include it as a conditional use, that way it doesn't become nonconforming. ADU should be prohibited or strictly regulated, and zoning and codes, I don't know the correct number, but they've looked into just how many we've done, I think it's been, it has been more than ten since we've initiated it. However, they would keep an eye on it, if it turned out we were seeing a rash of ADUs and it turned like that's how people were going about trying to increase the density, we would probably be back before you with a text amendment to reduce that. We've received some letters saying that the general business district should not be revised at all to restrict the current permitted uses, and then the letters I mentioned about establishing standards for the lighting. And so Tanya will be able to discuss Plan 2040 and how our regulations comply. And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce her, this is Tanya Voight, the county zoning director, and her and I have been working collaboratively on these revised regulations.
I was trying to figure out a way I could see my notes, but it looks like you guys can see my notes as well when I pull it up. So we'll just wing it. You guys obviously worked on Plan 2040 very indepthly. When we, when we originally started the process of the draft zoning regulations, we were still working under Horizon 2020. And so a lot of our public meetings, when we traveled around the county and we met with folks, we were pretty focused still on Horizon 2020 and the goals of Horizon 2020. We also knew that Plan 2040 was coming through the loop, and so we wanted to review those as well, but we didn't want to focus on those in the presentations because it wasn't adopted yet. And now that it's been adopted, we just kind of, I can be pretty quick about this, because I know we've got quite a few people in the room, but you guys have a lot of background already of how the proposed zoning regulations meet Plan 2040's guidelines and goals. So Plan 2040 was adopted, became effective November twenty ninth, two thousand and nineteen. It's a binding land use document that outlines general principles, goals, and policies. It's implemented by the zoning code and the subdivision regulations, and all development proposals must comply. If they don't comply, then we recommend an amendment to Plan 2040. The community vision is very important because it discusses a lot of the aspects that we have incorporated in the new regulations. The proximity of rural and agricultural land to the city provides beauty and respite. We enjoy the economic and health benefits of a robust local food system. Our countryside has thriving farms, rural neighborhoods and towns, protected open space and historic sites. Agriculture, the principal land use in rural Douglas County, is a major contributor to the county's economy. Our citizens value preserving the agricultural lands to ensure continued agricultural production while maintaining the rural character of the county. The main goals under the environmental and natural resources section identified the definition of sensitive lands. All of the items that we have checkmarked are ones that have been added to the proposed zoning regulations, so floodway and floodplain, high-quality agricultural soils, native prairies, native woodlands, wetlands and stream corridors. They've also identified the major goals is to adopt regulations requiring grading permits to minimize grading and steep slope development when possible. And we did discuss the option, when we look at development, to be able to do drainage studies, stormwater studies, those type of things if it's necessary. That's been added to the zoning regulations. Preserving and restoring native prairies, which is under the definition of sensitive lands. Preserving and sustaining native woodlands, which is also under the definition of sensitive areas. And identifying important wildlife habitats and prioritizing them for protection and conservation, that was not included in the zoning regulations. Some of the items that, or goals that are not identified by the zoning regulations will come later through open space plan, most likely, things that we didn't find that were something that we could use as a regulatory tool, or maybe we weren't interested in regulating that. Considering the complete natural resource system and identifying and preserving sensitive lands, which we have done, protecting high-quality agricultural soils through the prime farmland map that we have available, protecting contiguous amounts of agricultural land in rural areas for continued productive future use, that natural resources protection agreement will also help us keep farmland more contiguous, and also putting a density requirement on the larger acres of agricultural land will help us keep larger parcels contiguous as well. Promoting agricultural practices that mitigate erosion and preserve enhanced soil fertility for future productivity, which is also, again, where we can do stormwater and drainage studies. When it comes to the rural character in Plan 2040, their goals, we were able to meet all of those in the drafted language. Conserving the visual distinction between urban and rural areas throughout the county, that's easily done through just identifying the urban growth area and the areas outside of the urban growth area, and then working on each of those goals individually. Seeking and conserve, conservation of identified sensitive lands, identifying and adopting appropriate land division and zoning regulations that support the rural character and development patterns, minimizing agricultural land conversion to non-agricultural uses, clustering residential developments to preserve agricultural lands within the urban growth area, and maintaining working lands and high-quality agricultural soils for future generations. When it comes to development, P 2040's goals were to identify suitable lands to accommodate residential growth by facilitating orderly planned development, ensuring the transition from rural residential neighborhoods to make sure it's compatible with more intensive land uses and preserving sensitive lands. One of the major sectors in Plan 2040 was agriculture, and so there's a large part of our regulations that also discusses maintaining agricultural lands, it makes that a huge focus. Maintaining the regulations to accommodate agricultural-supported housing, we do that right now with accessory dwelling units, that's already in place in our current regulations. Those are units that are available for farm tenant housing, they allow an extra residence on a property that's a vested property without having to go through a subdividing of land process. It's limited in square footage, it has quite a few rules to it, it's supposed to maintain the character of the area by sharing the driveway to the primary house, so it doesn't look like you're cutting, doing a bunch of extra cuts on the lot, and you have several houses on one property. Many people are utilizing that by putting up accessory buildings and then putting living quarters within those accessory buildings. So part of it will be a shop, and the other part will be small living quarters. Driveway access to individual residential lots should be from a local roadway when possible, and when someone applies for a building permit, they have to apply for an entrance permit through Public Works, and we do try to, if it's possible, if they have two roads, we try to put them on the local roads if possible, where there's less traffic. Seeking conservation to identify sensitive lands, which we have done, identify and adopt appropriate land division and zoning regulations to support the rural character and the development patterns, protecting contiguous amounts of agricultural land, we've already talked about. Here's a map of prime farm soil in the county. This map is from the conservation district. That information, I think, when you guys went through the comp plan process, those maps began, or the data began being available in the nineteen seventies, and they came back and kind of identified the prime agricultural areas, it's class one and class two soils, maybe in the nineties. And then, since then, they've done several additional revisions, and then in two thousand and sixteen, they came back and just took the type one and type two soils, and then all the extra data, technological data that they had, they grouped that all together and made a prime soil map. So this does include type one and type two soils, but also includes some additional, more relevant, kind of newer information as well. So those green areas are the prime soil areas. And we utilize that in our office today, we have for several years already. When people come in and want to talk about their land or subdividing land, or just want to know what they've got on their property, we pull up this map and just have a talk about whether they have prime soil or not on their property. Minimizing non-agricultural residential development outside of the urban growth area, which we've tried to do to create a true agricultural district, which is the one dwelling unit per twenty acres. We revised residential development regulations to better conserve and enhance the rural character by also putting density requirements on, maintaining the existing and development, sorry, maintain existing and develop new codes accommodating various types of housing, just for agricultural uses, which is the ADU. We've also got a section that says reserved, we have a little bit of language for cluster housing, and that's an agricultural cluster housing option that we've been doing some research on. We are not ready for, we, we want it to be in the regulations under reserve section so that we know that it's a goal in the county, but it really, there's a lot of states that utilize it, Oregon uses, utilizes it, Colorado does it, where they preserve a much higher percentage of land, say eighty percent of the land, in an agricultural protection, conservation type easement, but then they allow cluster housing of houses on smaller lots, so even down to, say, maybe an acre. So we've had meetings with the health department, because their guideline is the three-acre guideline, to see if those types of things, if we, if we created an improvement district, had an engineered wastewater system designed, if that's something that we could get down to smaller lot sizes and have higher preservation rates on the agricultural side. So that is something we're interested in, that would come back with a text amendment change in the future. We also, one of the goals was to make sure that we have value-added agricultural production, and we promote that in the county, and that is something that we do have a set of standards that have been in place for several years for that. So let's go to the implementation stage. In Plan 2040, they actually provide really clear goals at the end of the whole plan that says, okay, we've got all these things that we'd like to see happen, we have all these really great ideas, but what, how do we want those implemented, which made our jobs really easy, because they were already outlined. And so those implementation goals that are in Plan 2040 are to strengthen the floodplain regulations to mitigate flood hazards. We did not make any changes to the floodplain regulations because those are fairly new from new maps from two thousand and fifteen, but we did just recently ask the state of Kansas to do some further studies in some watersheds where we're seeing some flooding outside of normal, just one-hundred-year flooding, we're seeing flooding in five-hundred-year events, and several repeated five-hundred-year floods within just a few years. And so we've asked for some new modeling of those areas. Those are primarily in the urban growth area, and that's why that information is so important to have ahead of time, to get really accurate information, because this is also the area where we're saying we want the most growth, but we want to make sure that the floodplain maps are accurate. So we are working on that, and we are in the process of updated maps. That will also come to you with a text amendment change, once we have new modeling information and new, new maps to adopt. Develop stormwater management policies for the unincorporated area to evaluate proposals to limit runoff and protect water quality. Again, when it comes to development, we've added the possibility of doing those stormwater studies, making that a requirement if it really is something where we're really concerned about drainage. Preserve and restore native prairies, including utilizing conservation easements. Native prairies has been added to our list of sensitive areas or sensitive lands. Preserve and sustain native woodlands, which has also been added to that list. Protecting high-quality soils, which we are now able to do with the prime farmlands map, protect contiguous amounts of agricultural land, which we hope having density requirements will also do. Create zoning regulations to provide guidance and protection for the county's historic unincorporated towns. And that was ultimately the goal of the village district. The village district, most of the unincorporated towns with the exclusion of Big Springs, has agricultural zoning, and in the agricultural zoning, those setbacks make every single lot nonconforming. And so those lots may be fifty by seventy-five, say, and are setback just for a front yard requirement in an agricultural zone district is fifty feet, so it wipes out the whole lot. So like Mary said earlier, we were going to the board zoning appeals, anytime someone needed to add a garage, add on to their house, build an accessory building, build a new house, everything was going to the board zoning appeals. So this village district for the agricultural zone properties will clean up a lot of that and will give them realistic setbacks, so they won't have to go to the board zoning appeals every time. We have a twenty-foot roadside setback now, six-foot sides, and a ten-foot rear in those areas, so they may not have to go to the board, and they may be able to do that just through an administrative process like most of the county can. Creating zoning regulations to provide guidance and protection for the county's historic unincorporated towns, I just read that. Preserve sensitive lands, which we have also identified. Protecting environmentally sensitive lands as new and existing areas develop and redevelop. So that definition of sensitive lands will be triggered when someone is subdividing land or going through a rezon process, and so anytime we're seeing this type of development, we can trigger those sensitive lands, the definition of that in, and take a look at the balance of that. Historic resources is another thing that we're kind of in the process of. We've added, under the definition of sensitive lands, to be able to utilize, I don't have my notes here, but it said, local, state, or federal historic or archaeological information. And the historic council, they've gone through and done several inventories in the county that they identified to us that they would like some of that historical information to be reflected in the zoning regulations to where they could protect it if they wanted to. That's not something that we're ready for yet, but we have started going to those meetings, and we have started kind of opening up that dialogue to know if someone, say a property owner, wanted to voluntarily put their historical information on a list, and they wanted that information to be that historical house, say, or historical stone fence, if they wanted that to be protected, they could voluntarily say, I'd like to be on the local list, and then we would be able to add it to a list. But we're still kind of working through those guidelines, but the process has been started. And encourage and facilitate adaptive reuse of historic structures. I believe that we are doing that to an extent right now, where if, it used to be that you could only have one house on a lot, period. So if you had an old historical house on a site and you wanted to build a new house, that old house had to be torn down, and so bye-bye, historical house. And now we've got the ADU option. We also have called, what's called a change of use that we process in the zoning and codes office. So even if something has the appearance of a house, but they want to change that use to an accessory building, and they only want to use that for storage, we can go through a process to change the use so they can keep the structure. And that's all for the implementation stage.
Does that include the presentation?
Yes, it does.
All right, well, thank you, Mary and Tanya. It's quite a, it's a lot to digest. At this time, we will open this matter up to public comment. Now, the rules for public comment, all of the city commissions or city, we're all following the same rules, so please come to the podium, please sign your name on the sheet of paper up there, clearly state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and during the course of your, of your talk, please address all comments and questions to the commission. to the commission and not to staff. If you give it to the commission, one of us will follow up on your questions.
My name's Randy Cree. I'm a lifelong resident of the Big Springs area. I'm talking tonight on behalf of the people from Big Springs in response to the suggestion that Big Springs be surrounded by the Village District border. The proposed change in zoning will have a significant impact on the Big Springs property. We recommend that the planning commission deny the changes in zoning language, or at least find language consistent with existing use. After all, residential and business use have cohabited on the same lots for decades without problems in Big Springs, large investments have been made by people buying property with knowledge of the present zoning of B2 in existence. Many properties were bought just within the last year. What existing problems are new rules trying to remedy or correct. The zoning language change is presented will have a huge impact on the residents and business owners of Big Springs, yet no informational meeting was conducted in Big Springs to explain changes to all of the property owners, like there were in other areas of the county. I was able to get letters collected from all the people residing in Big Springs. I turned them in this morning. One side of the folder is everyone on the north side of the road in the B2 zoning district, from 050 Road to 100 Road, with the exception of one parcel that the man bought from Kansas City, and I don't know how to get ahold of him, he does not live there. And on the other side of the road, on the south side of the road, I have all the letters signed, with the exception of the man that bought the car lot, and the two parcels east of that that are owned by an LLC, and I don't have the ability to get ahold of him. Is it okay if I ask how many people from Big Springs were notified about this? With a show of hands?
I think one of us will probably ask.
Okay, I'd like you to. Anyway, it was interesting. I met several new members of the Big Springs area that had just bought property within last year. I believe it was four or five. And they knew when they bought the property about the zoning, and they have hopes and dreams of making it work out. So we'd like to keep our B2 zoning, which I realize they're wanting to rename to GB. However, the GB zoning doesn't let us enjoy all of the wide boundaries of the B2.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next?
I'd like to ask you one question first. All the public comments haven't been limited at all. I have a long list of stuff to talk about. Why are we now being limited to three minutes?
Because those are always, those are the rules of the commission.
I can't hear you.
Those are the rules of the commission for public comment, both city commission, planning commission.
Okay, you haven't announced this before now at all.
Well, we haven't had any public comment up until now, and I did announce it for the general public comment before we started the agenda items.
I didn't hear the three minutes. Okay, I've got a few things here, and I'm gonna quickly go over them. Zoning was adopted in 1966. With zoning, it had a site plan, which was entered in with the zoning, when it was zoned. Anytime you make a change, a drastic change at all, you had to change the site plan, okay? And that still is in force, okay? B2 zoning, I want to remain the same. To start with, letters I was promised by Sarah Pinsky, a month ago, that I would receive a letter in regards to this, and I never received anything. My next-door neighbor was promised by Tanya that they would be getting a letter, that was a month ago, still not have got anything at all involved in this, okay? The only people that have received any letters at all are people in Big Springs. None of the other B2 zone properties have been notified. You held three public hearings, zoning did, on the A1, A2. No mention of rezoning at all for B2, B1, B3, nothing. It was only agriculture, A1 and A2 is what was advertised in the local newspaper, okay? On the zoning, I picked this up Thursday from Mary Miller, nobody else even has this, what B1, B2, what the new GB consists of. They've eliminated a lot of things, but everything that's in here right now can be done with a conditional use permit or home occupation standards. Fifteen years ago, the county literally refused to enforce their zoning regulations. JW Willis had 27 employees coming to his workplace beside Louis McElhaney, who was the chair of the Douglas County Commission. They refused to enforce their zoning regulations for five years. I was at almost every commissioners' meeting. Then it took them a year and a half, went through you commissioners, not your present ones, and created home occupation standards. So now you can either do it with a conditional use permit or home occupation standards. Why have zoning? My next-door neighbor's been trying to sell his B2 zone property, but they devalued it because you can do the same type of business on agricultural property with a conditional use permit, or go buy you some ground with a house on it, live on it, and conduct a home occupation standard, the same size that you can on B2 zoning. Why haven't the people in Douglas County with the B2 zoning been notified with a letter? And we was promised one, me and my neighbor, and never have got a thing. Okay, now the zoning enforcement officer, my neighbors talked to him, that was Tanya. A vehicle came out onto the rear of their property, team got out and took pictures. The neighbor tried to find out who they was, they wouldn't tell them, and then Tanya told them, two or three days later, told the neighbor who ran into the business, that they were surveying and taking pictures. Well, you can't trespass on private property. So why did she send them out?
Okay, your three minutes, you've run out of your time. I don't believe you stated your name.
Walt Spencer.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Spencer. We'll try to address some of those issues.
Okay. We have, today we have...
Your time has expired, so we're gonna have to go on to the next individual.
My name is Miles Schacter, and in three minutes, I'm gonna click into my New York voice, so please excuse me for talking very fast, okay? I live in Willow Springs Township. I have two properties, 15 acres and 17 acres. One with a house, one is farmland. They're both going to be zoned A Ag 2. And it's not in my interest, the things I'm going to say, they're kind of against Ag 2, or aspects of Ag 2, but I think they're interesting to the county. I was a planning commissioner, so I sat up there 15 years ago, and my background is planning, which I did over 30 zoning ordinances in the past, and I want to commend the staff, because they did a heroic effort of taking extremely complex things and putting them into a logical and practical and compromised format, and they did a great job. I only have three points of concern. I did read all 344 pages of the staff report and the zoning and subdivision changes. My three changes are, first, the location of the Ag 2. If you looked at Mary's map before, of all the Ag 2s that are going to be in the county, that map with all the yellow dots, since 2006, before 2006, we did not allow that. In 2006, the certificate of survey kind of got out of hand, I think. And now we have thousands of lots, Ag 2 lots, that Tanya says, thousands of lots. So it's gotten kind of out of control, and when we say our objective is to protect the rural development in the county, and then we have a thousand, more than a thousand lots out there, the thought of creating more is frightful. So the criteria to rezon to Ag 2 is not that strong. It's the golden rules, and it's subjective. So what I suggest is that, my request is, that Ag 2 be limited only to the UGA, and that if you want to expand it a little further, like we used to do, we used to say only in the UGA for new subdivisions, unless it was adjacent, immediately touching an existing, what we would now call an Ag 2 or subdivision area. So I would suggest limiting it outside the unincorporated, non-UGA areas. My second comment is about the ADUs. So you have all these yellow areas, which are subdivisions or certificates of survey or small lots, which are not agricultural. They can all then put in an accessory dwelling unit behind it. And we hope that that's just gonna be a few, but the economy is changing, and there are more houses being built, like in the city of Lawrence, behind other houses. And then if you allow, just like we didn't think certificates of occupancy were gonna go crazy, they did, the same thing can happen with ADUs. ADUs are meant for farm families and farmhands, and that should be in 20 acres or more, because those are the farms, not the Ag 2 districts. So I recommend that you eliminate the ADUs as a permissible use inside the Ag 2 districts. And my last comment, in the last 10 seconds, is dealing with lots on private roads. I strongly suggest you do not allow any subdivision lots to be on private or shared driveway roads. They should all be on public road right-of-way, with the adequate frontage, which is outlined in the regulations. You end up having these subdivisions way in the back with dog-like housing, and then it becomes a mess, because people don't maintain the roads. And I've exceeded my three minutes, sorry, Jim. Questions?
There might be. Thank you, Miles. Who would like to go next?
My name is Ken Riley, and I own property out northeast of town, in the approximate amount of 64 acres, divided into a variety of parcels. One parcel is basically the original homestead of a family who homesteaded it from, by the name of Whittier, from somewhere in Indiana. And I think they had to wait for the levee, for a road to come to the Lawrence area in order to really carry on much in the way of agriculture, et cetera. But in the process, it was transferred to these people's great-grandfather, C.C. Miller, who was basically a farmer, and had three sons. And one of those sons developed Miller's Barbecue. I don't know if any of you know where that was or is. It was, it's been, the building has been moved as a result of the death of Carol Miller and his wife, and used for different purposes. But the zoning remains the same, which is B2, I believe. Have you checked that, Mary?
I think it's on the east side of the county.
Yeah, B1 or B2, okay? And then, although the agriculture homestead is there, the B2 zoning applies to the entire three, three-and-a-half acre plot, roughly. This is right south of the levee, okay, in the northeast part of town, before you turn on 32 to go to Udoa. Okay, there's two other parcels north of the levee. When the levee was built, 1976, somewhere in there, roughly, one of those was used, I believe, or both perhaps, as borrow pits to build the levee. I came here, my family, 1976, former professor at Oklahoma, at Northwestern Oklahoma State Didn't look too good in terms of employment, not having a PhD degree at KU. However, eventually got into farming by virtue of working with Pine, Tongue, Grove and Heck Corporation, 1977, roughly. Went off on my own or into another corporation, 1978, 79. And eventually in 1980, approximately, went into business on my own with the help of a neighboring farmer, Nunnemaker Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I'm afraid your time has elapsed.
Oh, I thought that was...
That's it.
Well, that's the, okay. The point I make is, the land has historic value. I worked it for 30-some years to preserve it for the historic value and the productiveness of my extended family, my, my, my family. They are on record.
Thank you.
Can you let me take the next three minutes?
This is my daughter.
I'm Heidi Riley, and I'm just gonna add a couple things to what he was saying. So the reason that we're here is because we feel that our property has been, is in the process of being downzoned, and we don't want the property being downzoned. We would like, like for it to at least be kept at an equivalent zoning, and it has had some, the business zoning before, so we would like to keep it that way and not be downzoned. It is close to the intersection of Highway 24 and Highway 32, and if, you know, depending on how much it does develop out there, that could be an interesting location. And so we would like to keep it the way it is and not have our property downzoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm Rod Spencer. I haven't got much to say, but I am totally baffled by one thing. How in the world did man survive before zoning? I am really totally, there ain't a one of you in this room can understand what was put out here tonight. But mainly what Mary said to us at the meeting we had here a while back, if we wasn't in favor of it, it wouldn't go forward. This is probably most of all of B2 in Big Springs, and we're not in favor of it.
My name's Patrick D. James. I'm a young man, just moved into this neighborhood of Big Springs. Most of these people here started businesses and ran and raised their family off of their small property that's his own business, and I want the same right that they have, because I've built hot rods, and I work as a plumber at full-time, and if something ever happened with the economy and my plumbing job ends, I want the same right that these guys have all had since 1966, to start a business in my homestead, where everybody else has had the same right. I'm sorry you guys live inside the city, where you're in a small lot, and you can't have that right, but we should still carry that right. We moved to the, outside in the county for a reason, and we should still, no reason that that zoning should ever be taken away from us.
Thank you.
My name's Charles Jalen. That's...
That's spelled J-E-H-L-E. I don't suppose many of you get a start on that. Reason I'm here tonight is, this, I don't quite understand what's provoked this massive change now in the zoning here. I'm speaking strictly as a farmer out there. My family settled there after the Civil War. They bailed off the Santa Fe Trail there. And what's hurting us as much as any, and agriculture is, and has pushed up the value of all this ground, is, is the development the county has let go on, people putting businesses out there. I can count five or six businesses within about three miles of me, whether they're on the radar of the county, I don't care, it's none of my business, as long as they don't conflict with what I'm trying to do out there, and that's farm. Recently, you guys had a special use permit granted to a person there with a event center, which I try to be a very good neighbor to them. I didn't protest them, because I think they have the right to make a living just like I do. I just hope down the road here, when my tractor's in the field and the dust rolls over on them, they don't start complaining to me. But anyway, what concerns me is you guys are going to curtail what's going on out there. And us farmers, this ground, at some point in time, might become our 401Ks. I don't know whether we can all keep, continue to farm here in Douglas County. I drive around this county a lot, lived here all my life, and I just, they've got it chopped up so the county builds roads with bike paths on it, they encourage growth out in the country. And yet then you guys are trying to limit it. But the commission then is encouraging those people to come out there, which is fine. But what happens to our land values if you guys really clamp down hard on us, on what's going on out here? You know, we don't know. I have a son that's farming, I hope he farms the rest of his life. I don't know how it's all going to play out. I know you're watching the clock on me, but...
Periodically, I have to glance that way.
I don't think the majority of the landowners in rural Douglas County are complaining. And I don't really understand what's brought this on all of a sudden. Sometimes I think people are looking for a problem to work on. And I just, you know, the first thing I heard about it was, is in the general world, which you can, whatever your opinion is there, that's fine. It said the staff had been complaining about too many permits to build and all this and that. Well, I don't know whether that's what the real issue, what brought this on here. But down the road, if we're going to clamp down on this, are those people going to be without a job? Are they going to be reassigned? Is your zoning staff going to downsize because you're not going to be doing all this building out here in the county? Those are some questions that need to be answered. I guess my time's up, so I'll leave you alone.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Emily Fawcett, and when Randy got up here and spoke to you about people who have come into the Big Springs area in the last year, I would be one of those. So I did a very dumb-dumb thing a couple of years ago, and I fell in love with a guy from Lawrence. Mistake, but that's okay, aside the point. I wanted to move to your community, and I had been trying and trying and trying to find property in the area that would not only sustain my needs, but my, my growth as a business owner and what it is that I do for a living. What I do for a living is I go into high kill shelters, and I rescue pit bulls, and I train them, and I give them to service members, for free, donation if possible. I also do personal training, grooming, boarding, just a bit of animal person. When I contacted my realtor, I told him what I wanted to do, and he told me that Big Springs was the place for me. So I bought a home, I've been beautifying that home, I've been doing everything I can to that home, wanting to create my dream. Luckily, Randy came and knocked on my door on Saturday, super embarrassed, had no makeup on, was in my jammies, and we talked. If you guys do rezone Big Springs, I'm going to be forced to move. I'm going to have to leave, because I won't be able to make a living. And to me, that's really sad. I don't have a lot of money. I'm young, I'm single. I found what I want to do, I found the community that I want to grow old in. So my dad, the politician would say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Luann Boydston, and I just kind of want to add a little bit here to what they have, have been saying, and that is, you know, people, I, I bought a property there, I'm selling it on contract. I bought that knowing that it was zoned as it is. They bought it knowing it was zoned as it is, that it could be used for those uses. And now I think that's a horrible disservice to go in and say, well, no, now you can't do this. Or, you know, if you're going to sell it, it's not going to be zoned that way. That's, that's a huge impact on your neighbors. And I don't think any of you want to be harming your neighbors. And that is exactly what this does. And then if you get into some of the even more specifics, when I ask her, so, now what happens if something happens to the house? You know, because if you look, you know, you can't have a house there now. You can have a caretaker house. Mary, could you bring that chart up?
We'll get it later.
We'll get to that.
But, but look at what you can have on the new, okay? And look at the non-conforming, and why you would ever want to put a property in a non-conforming, because, say it was destroyed by a tornado or whatever, you know, then why would you put it into a non-conforming and, and then tell you what you can or can't do with that property? I don't understand that. I mean, the whole point to me would not be to have non-conforming property. That would be the point, wouldn't it? And, you know, like I said, I just think, you know, changing the value on someone's property or what they can do there after they have bought and sold that property is a huge disservice.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
My name is George Davis, and I received a letter from Douglas County and the city of Lawrence. And I wonder if you received a copy of this about the rezoning in Big Springs to a V district? Did they send you a letter, or do any of the commissioners know about the letter they sent? No. Well, you know, I've had a lot of people read it. I'm going to read you a little piece of it. "If the regulations are adopted to V, your property will be rezoned to the V Village District. Intend is to guide and protect the unincorporated towns, but not to allow expansion beyond their historical borders. Some of the benefits of the village zoning will be revised lots and setback requirements that match the existing development, comma, removing the non-conforming status in many of the structures and lots." This is a very threatening letter. I had five attorneys read it, and they said, in other words, they're going to condemn your property if they change to V. We aren't conforming because the property was built, some of it in the 1850s. In fact, we're even past what they consider the setback now, but we've been paying taxes on it for years. So I guess, you know, is this true, or, or this is not something that we asked for or wanted? Anyway, that's the point I wanted to make, was that we got a very threatening letter. And I don't understand why. We're paying taxes just like the rest of you. I'm sure that we could find a violation on every piece of property in Douglas County if we wanted to look. But, you know, I, I'm not happy with this, and I do own four pieces of property in Big Springs. And I, it's like a 401K to me, as far as I'm concerned, because I am very interested in selling it at this point. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we don't normally interrupt the public comment, but this might be one where I think maybe some clarification would be very helpful, that I think the wording of the letter was misunderstood to be the opposite of what was intended. Could we pitch that to Mary for some clarification?
Take your point. And Mary, would you like to comment on these letters that went out?
Yeah, during our public meetings, we identified properties throughout the county that were zoned, commercial or industrial, but didn't appear to be used for commercial or industrial uses. And we sent those people all letters saying, would you be interested in rezoning your property? And we wanted answers. We also sent letters to everyone who lived within the boundaries we identified as a village district, letting them know that we were creating a village district, and that we, if it's adopted, their properties could be rezoned to that. And so when we said it would remove the non-conforming status, it doesn't, it means it would make it conforming, was the intent of that, not to say anything bad was going to happen to their property. But if the village district, if the setbacks and the lot sizes match what they are now, they would then be conforming lots and structures. And so it's a good thing, then, you know, if your structure is destroyed or damaged by fire, you build it right back where it was. Today, most of the buildings are non-conforming if they're damaged by fire and to more than 50% of their value. To rebuild, they have to meet the setbacks or go get a variance, and a variance would be very possible, because these are very old lots, and, but that would be a process they would have to go through. So we're offering the option of the village district, and we've had meetings, we told Big Springs residents that came to our meeting, that we don't intend to rezone anyone to the V district, but we're making the district available, and if someone wants to zone to it, they can. If they don't want to, they don't have to. And so Big Springs, most people told us they'd rather not zone to the village district. So at this point, if they're not going to zone to the village district, they should probably focus on what's being allowed in the business district, and making sure those uses are what they prefer. But that was the intent of the letter. It was just a courtesy letter sent out to residents of the village to let them know what we were doing. We wanted to notify them that we're considering a village district. If it's adopted, they would have the option to rezone to it. We've had some people that are interested in rezoning to it for their small incorporated towns. And so I think the letter is misunderstood, is telling them, we are rezoning you tonight, and no one's being rezoned with the adoption of the regulations. Your districts will convert if the regulations are adopted, and some of the uses that are allowed in your current district might change. But at the end of the adoption of these regulations, there will not be one property zoned village. That will have to come later through rezoning processes.
Mr. Chair, could I reiterate that just a little bit? Would that be okay?
Go ahead.
No, we're a little out of procedure.
We could probably go in large discussion about this village zoning. I don't know how far we want to go right now, but...
I'm sure we will. But just, if you just give me just a minute. So what you're saying is, if you got a letter, it's because what you were doing didn't match your, the zoning you have right now. So it would be a non-conforming at the moment, but the letter was to say, we're giving you the option of something that would make you conforming. Do you want that?
No, because I don't know for sure that the uses in the village districts are not conforming. I looked at a map throughout the whole county, so I sent out two sets of letters. One was just to people in the county that I looked at, and I could see it was farmland, or it looked like a house, and I sent them a letter saying, you, you don't appear to need commercial and industrial zoning, you know, we would like to rezone you when the regulations get adopted. I've had a lot of people say, well, I am using my house as an office, or I have plans, I don't want to rezone, so I have a table listing all that. The next letter we sent out was to the village area, and just letting them know that we would like to create a village district. And if it gets adopted, and there is a village district, after the regulations are adopted, we would work with you to see if you want to rezone. And the village district might reduce some of the non-conformities of their lots or their structures. And without doing an in-depth review of everybody's structures and their setbacks, I don't know whether we reduce them, the non-conformities, or if it'll repair them. But that was why that was mentioned.
But they were both optional, either, the letters were just to explain options that were given to the homeowners, not intended to be a threat of any sort.
Correct, right. It was just, we're just trying to let them know ahead of time what we were thinking so we could get their feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think we'll return to this more in-depth after we conclude public comment. But at this time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Could you come up to the podium, please?
I don't need to. I've already spent my one minute up here, but I'll spend another minute. I run a business, and when I change something in that business, it's to benefit either me or my customers. What is this going to do to benefit me or you? Or is it just you?
All right, thanks. Is anyone else which the comment that has not been up to the podium yet? Last chance. All right, I don't see anyone else coming up, so we're going to close public comment. This is a massive undertaking for one evening. But since, I, I think most, most of the comments this evening so far have been about the village district, why don't we start with that? Commissioner Willie?
I'd ask, actually ask Mr. Chair, you know, I've spent a lot of time going to these meetings, and I haven't been at any in Big Springs, but around in the county and trying to understand these. Can I give a little bit of context from my own perspective before we get down in the weeds?
That would be helpful, since you've been to, what, almost all of the meetings?
I've been to two. I sent my husband to one. I think then another one got canceled, so we, we tried to make the rounds. Most of what we heard in the presentation is kind of nitty-gritty cleanup stuff that probably doesn't interest anybody besides planners, and I think maybe that would get some nods from the room. Some of that's just over the years, as the code gets, a minute it gets messy and needs to be kind of addressed in that phase. So a lot of it is that. And so, so some of those things won't have big impacts, except for making the jobs of the planning and for us, a little bit easier. The rest is kind of to give us a better decision-making tool. So we're certainly not done, we're only beginning to have the discussions about what kind of development is right for the city, for the county, for the different parts of the county. And mostly, we don't have the tools to evaluate what we have, because we have all these districts, they're not used for what they, I mean, they're mostly not being used appropriately, everything's zoned agriculture, whether it is or not. It's just too confusing and too little information for us to really know as a community what we have and what we want, and how do we move forward. In my understanding, most of what we're talking about that's been proposed is kind of just a really good first pass to, to start giving us those tools. 1966 was the last time this was done. Every county but like two or three in the state of Kansas has actually progressed further with this than we have in terms of being able to delineate between when we have, where we have agriculture and where we have residential. Almost everybody has done this. We're actually way, way behind Franklin County, Osage County, Shawnee County, and most, I think all but like three western Kansas counties have tackled a lot of this and addressed a lot of this. So we're not doing anything weird, we're not doing anything, Douglas County, we're actually surprisingly behind. So that's kind of the context for it. Also, so I live in Willis Springs, not far from Mr. Yehle, and, and so the meetings that I went to, I tried to hit north-south and everything, there was not one of those meetings in, in Big Springs, but boy, when we live in the county, we're just happy they don't have them at the Lawrence Library, you know? Just that there was so much effort to try and get those meetings out to where the people who care about that could get to them within somewhat of a reasonable. What I think is surprising is how few other people we have here. I know it seems like a big crowd for us, but this is, this is a big deal. And the, the messages that I heard from people, both in the public comment in those meetings and also one-on-one afterwards, just trying to get people in the parking lot and everything, was pretty positive, was pretty like, well, that's not that big a deal. I had one person, a fifth-generation farmer, say, this is the smartest thing I've heard out of the county in 25 years. It was generally pretty positive, and I don't want us to lose track of that because we have an issue that needs to be dealt with in, in Big Springs. We don't have the other villages here saying they don't like it. I think they liked a lot of the options of, the optional, being able to, to zone into a village. Big Springs was the outlier with that, and we'll have to spend a lot of time talking about it. But I don't want to lose track of the fact that Clinton Lone Star Vinland is still included? Still, are there any others? And Pleasant Grove? We didn't hear any pushback from that. It, it offered a solution to problems that they felt they had, because they were zoned agricultural and trying to meet these setbacks they didn't meet, which means any... meet these setbacks they didn't meet, which means anything they did had to go to one of these boards. And, well, nobody wants that, right? Big Springs is the exception because it's zoned business, and that's why we're having this particular discussion. So while we have this discussion, I don't want us to lose track of the things that were actually a pretty easy sell about these regulations, when we talk about these ones that are trickier. So thank you for letting me have that time.
So there was a suggestion that we have the chart up. So maybe it'd be helpful if we could see what the difference is between the B2 and the Village.
So this is the use permitted table that shows, you can see what's allowed in the village district with a P, and then other uses with a C would be conditional uses, so...
So what we're comparing is GB to V, is that correct?
GB to V.
GB to V.
Let me see. I might be able to. Yep. And so this is just the agricultural-related uses, and then I can scroll down. I created a comparison chart of uses that were converting, but I didn't compare Village to other districts since it's a new district in those comparisons.
Did you compare GB to B2?
There is a table. I just saw.
What was that?
Yeah, GB and B2.
Right. I did compare B1 and B2 to GB, but I did not compare Village to any other district because it's a new district. So I didn't make an easy side-by-side comparison table.
So what we're talking about is anything that's B1 or B2 would become the new district of GB?
Correct.
And the thing that jumps out first is that you lose single-family dwellings.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, you know, you can always have your single-family dwelling, but it would be a non-conforming use, just as we have a lot of single-family dwellings in North Lawrence that are non-conforming in an industrial district. Dwellings are protected, non-conforming uses. If they're destroyed 100%, they can rebuild. So it's, it would protect those existing residences. If a new residence was going to build, they would need to rezone, and that parcel would probably need to zone to Village or to add to in order to have a residence.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, any existing residence, even though it would now be non-conforming, has the right to rebuild?
Right. And that's in the non-conforming section. It just states it clearly. There's a sentence that states that dwellings are allowed to rebuild regardless of the degree of the damage.
So the biggest change is if you want to build a new residence or a new structure?
Right. Do I just scroll through this, or do you guys?
I don't know where we go next. So how does, so the option then is if your B2 is now, becomes GB, and you also happen to be in one of the areas that's within the confines of what's designated as a Village, you'd be able to request a zoning change to Village, which would allow you to build a new residence?
Correct.
Okay. And if you become the new Village zoning, what on the GB table disappears?
A lot of the uses stay. For instance, you can see Village. A lot of the commercial uses just require conditional use permits. So if you have, if you're in the GB district and you have a commercial use and you zone to Village, then you would have an automatic conditional use permit. So it wouldn't affect it unless you're just a use that's not allowed. For instance, we're not recommending construction sales and services be allowed in a Village district, just because that would seem more intense and more impactful when you consider how close the houses are together. Or commercial dog kennel, we're not recommending that in the Village district. So these are where changes could be made. If a person said, well, I really need that use, we could add it with the CUP. These uses were designed, just developed based on our thoughts of what would be appropriate in a very dense residential district. So if you look through, light equipment sales and rentals would not be allowed, even with the CUP, you know, unless that use was added. Heavy equipment sales and rentals wouldn't be allowed. So you couldn't sell cranes and... So basically, the idea was to try to pick things. Sexually oriented business wouldn't be allowed, just because it's so dense and the residences are so close together. That's allowed now, but it wouldn't be allowed. It's allowed with the CUP today.
Do you have something?
So I don't know if I can ask a question for Emily Fawcett. Would you be considered a kennel?
No, I, we, not at all.
I mean, it was just out of curiosity if that affected.
No, no. I will usually only, will take in like, you know, two to maybe three dogs at a time. I would love to tell you that I'm that talented and do multiple dogs at $30,000, but I, you know, then I'm not doing a service to the veteran who needs the animal. But I am trying to take advantage of that, you know, the Highway 40 corridor. You know, with all these people that are kicking back and forth, I would really like the opportunity to be able to groom their dogs, train their dogs while they're at work, things like that. You know, like I said, I set forth to purchase a home in Big Springs to do what it is that I do for a living and what I'm good at. And under these criteria, I'm not going to be able to. But no, I don't do a kennel, no. I love dogs, not that much.
Our video guy's going to have a problem if you don't get people up to the podium to speak. Do you mind stepping up? Because I'll ask you a follow-up question if you don't mind. Yes, please, Ms. Fawcett.
I was waiting to see if there was going to be more than one or two sentences.
Yes. So would your business, under the proposed general business, would that still be, would you be able to operate your business under that?
No, because I would like the opportunity to be able to, like, you know, sell some retail, too. Like, you know, if I'm training a dog, I would like to be able to say, you could buy this food, you could buy this leash, you could buy this collar. You know, I'd like the opportunity to set up to be able to groom dogs and have those dogs on, you know, my property for the day. And under, no, under the certain criteria, like now, no, I wouldn't be able to do that.
And the issue being the retail sales portion? Because all of this is, we're writing this now. If people have recommendations to say, hey, if we change this, everything works for me?
Right.
That's what kind of stuff we want to ferret out.
Right. And I'm wanting, I mean, I'm wanting to make it income off of my property.
Okay.
You know, I have health issues that make it so it's like hard for me to travel. It's hard for me to do things, and I'm only 40 years old. So I'd like to be able to work at home.
Let me ask another question. It sounds like what you're doing would also fit under rural home businesses. You're the only employee, you're...
I would like to have employees.
Okay. I mean, under rural home businesses, you can have two to four, depending on the type of rural home business. And that would, would that, rural home businesses, they're not allowed under Village. Would that be, checking with Mary. We'll let her. And yet the general business, if that retail sales portion were changed, then that would fit for your business?
Can I, a point of clarification, please? Because I'm looking at the general business, and it says retail sales are allowed. So I'm a little confused.
Under the GB?
Yes, under GB. It says retail sales are permitted use.
What we have now would be, but if you moved it to Village, you wouldn't be able to.
But it's only a choice if you want to do Village, right? Mary, is that, so retail sales are permitted under general business. And it would only be disallowed if she chose to rezone to Village. But she doesn't have to choose to rezone to Village, so there isn't a problem, correct?
If she's under GB, she can't live there.
She, yeah.
All right.
Can you address that, Mary?
Hold on.
Sorry.
She can live there if she has a house. You can live in your house. And as we discussed, even if it's totally damaged, she can rebuild her house and continue living there. She couldn't build a new house under the GB zoning after it gets adopted. But, right, she could live in her house.
She can live in her house and have retail sales.
Yes.
Okay.
If something happened to her house, because if something happened to her house, you could have...
Excuse me.
Oh, wait, wait.
Excuse me. So essentially, the only way you'd have a new house is if your existing house was destroyed, you could build a new house to replace the lost house.
Right. But if you wanted to develop empty land, land that doesn't have a house on it, you would need to rezone to the Village district. You would have to zone to a district that allows residential. If you wanted to have a home occupation, that's allowed in the Village district. The type 1 is. Type 2 takes the CUP, I believe. So a lot of these uses would still be allowed. And type 2 does allow, I think they both allow, limited retail sales. So there's a lot of options. I think it just involves looking at all the uses and trying to learn what is permitted, what isn't permitted, based on everybody's specific desires.
And I'm a little bit confused, because I would really like to purchase even the properties across from me that have been very vacant for a very long time. And my family and I have like talked about, you know, turning one to a cafe, turning another into a bed and breakfast. And so this gets a little...
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, I would follow up to her comment that if you were to purchase those lots and have them be general business, then that, so the Village district isn't something that's being forced on anybody. It's an option if that fits for people. And for a lot of the villages, for a lot of the lots, it really is helpful to them. But it may not be for you, and it may not be for anybody in Big Springs, possibly. But it sounds like what would probably happen with yours, your property, if the rest of these zoning regulations went through, is that you would then meet with Mary or staff and look at what fits best for you and make that choice. So, is that...
Right, or just keep it as is, right?
Okay. Any other questions or comments by a commissioner?
I've got a question for staff.
Thank you.
Mary, what, are there any changes involved with cell towers, putting up cell towers in any of the districts, including the Village district?
I think we did limit them out of some districts. And I don't know if legally we're allowed to do that. We asked the county councilor to look it over, and he hasn't, he didn't comment on it. So they're not permitted in some districts, just because of the closed quarters.
So I was looking, I assume they fall under, so specifically with cell towers, do they fall under wireless facilities?
Yes.
Okay, the wireless facilities, not radio, television, microwave?
Right.
So they're conditional use, they're conditional use in all districts?
Okay.
So what, can you refresh my memory on what, if any restrictions exist in the current uncorporated area zoning for cell towers?
They're allowed with the conditional use in all districts.
This conditional use all?
Yes.
So, okay, no change across the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Mr. Patrick a question?
You certainly may.
And I didn't catch your last name. I'm sorry.
D. James.
D. James. Can I just ask you a follow-up? You said you want the right to do a business in Big Springs. And there are portions of the general business zoning that you feel like don't allow you to do that?
So what we have is, right now, we have B2. And if we don't adopt to the new Village, then we're going to general business, correct? And so when you're doing that, you're taking things away. And one of them's, and the main one that I have a problem with is hobby farms. That's what you would consider me, I believe. And I can't find it on here.
Yeah.
Sorry, there's so many things that don't apply to any of this stuff. Sorry. So GB right here has absolutely nothing. So what is that going to require? So can I just have a hobby shop and consider it a business? And can I put a sign outside with my name on it?
Are you talking about a shop or a farm, or are you talking about both?
A shop, like an automotive shop, like what we've had in that town. We had it there since 1966. And the only reason why we don't have a gas station in our little town is because of regulations of the EPA and the things that they've required the tool bar to take out back in the 70s and 80s. You know, and those regulations are the reasons why we don't have the things in our town, and the reason why businesses have all left our town, are because of regulations that you guys have put on us. My thing is, is we don't want to change to a GB. We all have stated, we want a B2 zoning to stay in place. So no matter what you guys do, you're taking our B2 out and changing it to general business. We don't want that.
And we're trying to get at what pieces of it are a problem, and if those pieces are something that we can just address. So is your question about the sign, or is your question about the shop?
Just in general, are you going to allow me to open up a shop and run my own business out of there?
Let's ask, let's ask Mary.
Right. As far as the question about, could you have a automotive shop? It's called light equipment sales and service, and that's a use that's allowed in the GB district. The GB is the most intense commercial district. So if you look down in the column, you went down to the commercial section, and it is allowed.
So that would be allowed?
Yes.
And if there's a residence there, that's also allowed to stay?
Yes.
Unless it burns down?
And then you can rebuild it.
I couldn't rebuild it, because you said if it's GB, then you can't rebuild your house. You can only have the business, correct?
No.
Incorrect.
The home...
You can rebuild a house if your house burns down on general business?
Yes, it's non-conforming, and so it's protected. A dwelling is. If you had a use that's not allowed, like, I don't know, say some other use, a farm stand or whatever's not allowed, and it burns down, you could not rebuild it unless you've rezoned. But a dwelling is protected.
So if Ryan's tool bar burns to the ground, he couldn't build it back up?
It's allowed in that district.
All right.
So yes, he could, with no problem.
But could, say if he wants to sell it to somebody, and they want to open it up as something else, like a bar, you guys wouldn't allow it, though, right?
A bar is allowed in the GB district.
It is, right. But, yeah, would you have to get any special permit use?
Not in the GB district, just a site plan, it says.
Okay. Let's bring it back up here. Any other discussion about the Village district or potential modifications to that? And it seems so tied, just for Big Springs, tied to the general business. But as Commissioner Willie pointed out, the other communities are primarily, those are all ag right now. So these potential conflicts are only in the Big Springs area?
I have a question for, sorry, Julie, go ahead. I haven't...
I'm going to butcher his name, Sir Miles?
Shacter.
Yes, Shacter. Can someone address, he had three points. Is there, are those Mary questions that, that we need to ask her to address, the specific concerns that he had?
Those all have to do with ag, too, so...
Are we done with general business and Village?
I see, when I finish GB and then move on?
If we could, and then we want to ag, too. I wanted to ask those questions, too.
If I may, I'd actually like to ask Ms. Riley, would you mind coming up to the podium? I'd just like to ask you to take a moment to elaborate when you said that you thought that your property was being downzoned. Could you explain what you mean by that?
So in the letter that we received, it's zoned business right now. In the letter that we received, there was a little picture of the plot at the bottom of the letter, and it's, I can grab my phone and tell you, but it said something about proposing agricultural use. And so to me, in my mind, going from general business or B1, B2, down to agriculture was a downzoning. Because it had a restaurant, there was a restaurant originally on that property. And I don't think that restaurants are allowed under agriculture.
So that sounds like a special case, as opposed to this automatic mapping of B1 and B2 to GB. This is a case where there is an actual change in status?
Yes. This is where I looked at properties from the aerial photographs, and I picked the ones that, from the aerial, did not look like they were commercial. I don't think it's commercial now. And I wrote letters to the people. Maybe I didn't word the letters quite right, and I probably, if I knew this was going to happen, I would have been much more clear. But I was letting them know that, are you interested in rezoning? You know, do you have an objection to rezoning? You don't appear to need the commercial or industrial use. And the Rylings have contacted me and said, no, we don't want to rezone. So they're on my list to not rezone. Anybody on my list, I've had people call and say, I'm a farm, I don't want industrial zoning. And so they're on my list to rezone. So when these all get adopted, I'll probably contact everyone again and try to be much more clear, so I'm not giving the wrong impression, and let them know that we're going to start rezonings. If you're interested, please let me know. And I'm not going to rezone anyone that doesn't want to, because I actually need their authorization, you know, to move forward and initiate rezonings. So she's right. If she's interested in doing commercial zoning, she shouldn't rezone it.
Okay. It didn't, it didn't come across that way in the letter. It came across more as, this is what we're... It came across more as, this is what we're doing. If you have any objections, let us know. That's kind of how more it came across.
That's what we're trying to clarify tonight. So, Mary, it sounds, is this a fair statement? Basically, we're looking to zone to the current use for the majority of the properties?
For those ones in the county that don't appear to need the commercial or industrial zoning, right. We'd like to revert it. But then we've had some people say, yeah, it's industrial, or, I mean, it's agricultural, but I'm on the highway, I want to be in the future, and I don't want to have to rezon later. It's too hard to rezon. So I took those people off my list to zone as well. If they really don't want to rezon, they're not going to rezon. But I'd like to clean up all the properties I can so we don't have people who have no intention to develop anything other than agriculture. We have industrial zoning there because it goes in our list as, you know, property that's available for industry. So we're just trying to clean it up.
So it's, it's actually two things. One is trying to zone to the use and also find out who doesn't want to change an existing zoning that they may not be actually using at the time.
Right, I don't want to rezon anybody. We wouldn't want to rezon anybody that actually has plans or in the future would like to do an industrial use because it is hard to rezon to that. If they have that zoning and they have plans, they should keep it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
In a general sense, do we risk setting up the conditions to basically spot rezon almost the entire unincorporated area of the county?
No.
Doesn't really appear that way.
Not with this action, but with, when we set this, when we subdivide the zoning categories and then ask for election or non-election or rezoning, we're going to get down to the, the plot, the plat level detail on some of these. Is that a risk, an issue?
I think we should direct that to Stan.
I don't believe it's an issue. You know, spot zoning isn't just a spot that's zoned. You have to be zoned, and your intention is to benefit that property owner more than the people next to them. So if we had five properties in a row, but just the center one, we've rezoned it commercial, but the rest were residential, that would be spot zoning because we did it just to benefit that one property? Well, we're treating everyone the same. So in the village district, if they want to zone village, but somebody wants to stay agricultural, we're not going to have all these pretty uniformed districts because we're going to be trying to meet the use. And we don't want to rezon people against their will. I know, I think the county can do it, but I don't think that's anybody's intent. So in order to create the best zoning we can, we may have some areas that the zoning is different, but I don't think it'll classify as actual spot zoning that...
Mr. Willie?
I was going to actually call up, actually, I was going to call on Luanne first, if that's all right. Are you willing, and, and your last name again, I'm sorry, I don't hear very well. Voitston? Okay, Ms. Voitston. You had mentioned in your, in your comment that you were especially interested in having both uses. And that's one of the things that is kind of in jeopardy when we're choosing either village or the, the B, the general business district. Is that because of the concerns about an existing home and what happens to it? Or do you have some other reason?
No, I, I just don't think, I mean, now you're sitting here talking about asking whether somebody wants to change their zoning or not. Well, if that's the case, no, just leave it where it's at. Then, then why rezon? I mean, why, why, okay, you buy something, okay? And you buy it under the pretenses that, you know, it's a commercial piece of property. And then after you've bought it, they come and they say, well, no, we're not going to let you have that commercial anymore. Now you can have something else there. But that's not what you bought it for. I, I mean, does that make you feel good?
Well, I don't, I, so I, I know this zoning stuff and planning stuff, it's so complicated and so confusing.
I, I understand that. And you guys, I know, do a great job. But I'm just saying, buying something and selling something under different terms, you know, am I liable to the people I'm selling the house to because I told them that, you know, hey, you know?
So, so there's a couple of things going on, and one of them is some properties, so not Big Springs, but talking about the Rylings' property, that it's being used for, say, agriculture, but it's always traditionally held a commercial zoning. This is just kind of that cleanup part I talked about before. They're contacting those people and saying, is, is this what you wanted? Or because you're using it for agriculture, is, is that the zoning you want? So that when we start to make decisions based on what we see on our maps, we have some idea if, is that land really available for commercial? And they're saying, yeah, it is, and we want it to be. So we're leaving it alone. We're not changing that. But we asked them. So with the, what's a little different with what we're talking about with the B2 is that because we used to have so many zoning districts, and we're trying to clean that up and make fewer of them, and then make them a little clearer as far as what's going to happen there, so that when you buy a property, you have an idea if the property to your, to your east is zoned, you know, general business, this is the list of things that could happen there. Or if it's zoned residential, this is the list of things that could and couldn't happen there. It's to give that person that understanding. Whereas before, with the B2, was kind of this kind of anomaly that you could do a variety of things that don't really match each other. And that's what's really unusual in, in, in the zoning circles is that, that there's so much uncertainty for, say, a person who buys a piece of property, and you don't know what's going to go next door. And that's part of the reason for kind of this pass-through. So, so with that in mind, is you're selling a piece of property. If, if you're selling it as general business, then they have that list of...
No, I sold it as B2.
As B2. And they bought it?
Correct.
With the idea that they could do either a residence or they could do a business, and now they'll have a choice. Because, because of this weird moment in time...
What choice? One or the other? Because their understanding is they can do both.
And they will get the choice of one or the other.
Okay, and see, how, how, how does that work for you?
This is kind of a weird moment in time where we're trying to clean things up, and there would also...
So you're going to clean things up and harm your neighbors while you're doing it? Because I just don't see people as being the...
Wait for a question. What, generally what happens is, at least in the city, there have been multiple changes in zoning categories over the history of the city. And usually, whenever there's a request for a change or something, we get that history about what that use was in the past, whether it's a nonconforming use. It doesn't say you have to stop doing what you're doing, but it's trying to have some consistency across the unincorporated areas of the county, which pretty much doesn't exist right now. Because this process has been going on for 18 years. It's just taken that long to, to get to this proposed zoning code. Now, that doesn't mean that this is going to be the final version. It means this is the starting point. And as specific instances come up, they're going to be discussed by this commission, they're going to be discussed by staff, they're going to be discussed by the county commission. We'll make the final decision of whether or not to adopt them or not. So this whole conversation is going to take place yet again at the county commission level because we can just recommend changes or recommend it to stay the way it is based on what we get from staff. They do the bulk of the work based on, you know, everything that exists. And one of the references you've heard tonight from a, from a study that was done in 2000. And some of those are what's finally been, being implemented with the language and the code that's coming to us this evening. So this is, you know, this is a big deal, and some people, some properties are going to be in those, those gaps where things change. And there's generally a provision on how to deal with those when they come up on a case-by-case basis. So we can't answer every question tonight. It's just an impossibility. Because...
I noticed though in, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Lone Star, you made a district, you know. Could you not do Big Springs and let them be, stay the same?
Well, that's possi, a possible discussion that might come out of all of these because there seems to be some characteristics about Big Springs that don't apply to all the other areas. So we're, that's one of the things that we can discuss, but, you know...
And I appreciate that, and I, I, I hope that happens.
But my understanding of Lone Star is that's developed on, and everything was nonconforming. So they're trying to figure out a way to, to have some regulation and predictability out there that they don't have now. That's the whole purpose of zoning.
Right.
Is to have, is so you know what you can do with your land, and your neighbors know what's going to happen. So they don't buy a piece of property, as was pointed out, that suddenly becomes a pig farm or something like that.
Right, right.
Nothing against pig farms, though, right?
Well, just saying.
Yeah, not for it to just...
I have nothing against pig farms unless they're too big. But, you know, so we're going to try to move on a little bit. So, thank you. Do you have other questions for anyone? Commissioner Willie?
I believe Mr. Cre was interested in being addressed.
Just, I wanted to just say one thing real fast.
Do I need to sign it again?
No.
There's, there's a difference here between the woman that got the letter and said, do you want to change, or, you know, it doesn't look like? That is not the case. Let me assure you, everyone in Big Springs, Kansas knows that they have commercial zone property and what they're going to do with it and what they haven't done with it, and the ones that have just bought four pieces in the last few months at the price I heard they paid. They know it's commercial zone, and they know what they want to do with it. So, you know, if, it's, the water might be muddied up a little bit on this, but in Big Springs, everybody is, is, knows what they have and, and has plans for it.
So Mr. Cre, so far, and, and that's why we're asking people up one by one by one, is, is there anything that is, that you want to do with your property realistically, not just out there?
I've already been doing my property for decades.
That, that isn't allowed under the GB. And, and so, because we can address some of these things, like in all these details, we kind of are up for discussing that. So far, we haven't found anyone that can't.
The people that, that had the printouts were alarmed when, you know, you follow this line and follow that line, and where they intersect, it says, no dwelling. How am I going to live there and work their boat? That, that was the big trouble.
Have we satisfied you that that's not anything that makes a house go away, even if it gets destroyed, that it can be real, that those are protected?
That sounds encouraging. Can I do that in writing?
Yeah, sure.
It's on the screen.
If, if that, if that part, then, if that satisfies you, are there other issues that concern you still?
I can fix tractors. I'm not legally, I, I wouldn't want to say that that's all that needs to be addressed.
But we're making a little progress, right?
That's helping.
Okay.
That should help
Thank you.
the attitude a lot.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Can I just ask why we can't just keep a B2 zoning and a GB? Can we just stay where we're at, like they said we're going to?
They have no question to you, so please. I, I think one thing we know is B2 is going away. It's going to be GB.
I'm sorry, we have to kind of run things on a meeting.
Okay. Do we have more to discuss on B2 and...
May I just ask that this, is this list that I'm looking at that's B2 compared to GB, is that something that was made available?
It was put on our website. I made it just the other day when I had a lot of these questions. Because I thought, it is hard to look at this chart, and then to look at the old zoning and compare it, so...
Because I am looking at the GB, and I'm, I'm seeing this list from B2 to GB, and I'm seeing a lot more uses allowed under GB when I see this.
Well, that should probably be made available.
All right, please, please.
So... So if it is on the website, so that people with...
It's on the Planning Commission Agenda Packet, if anybody would go look at that.
So people with very specific concerns, like my, this is what I do on my land. I want to look and see if I can do that. That will be then made available. So that you can look at this list and see if you, if your business is on here or not, and then address the, and then those concerns can be addressed.
Can we move on to A2? Mr. Shacter, could you come back up? I believe Ms. Butler has some questions for you.
Mary does have my comments distributed later for you.
That was my question, and I didn't know if Mary had responded, or if you have any comments that you can tell us about Mr.?
Miles.
Mr. Miles. Comments or his suggested changes for Ag 2?
Yeah, the Ag 2, that's transitional agriculture. So when, when you're out in the rural area and you're over 20 acres and you want to rezon, we don't only use the golden criteria, we also look at, is this productive farmland or potentially productive farmland? That's one of the criteria. So if you, and we kind of look Franklin County as a goal for that, and also Riley County, because they have this transitional ag zoning where maybe the property is divided from the rest of the farm or the creek, maybe it's got some sort of topographical issues that it's not good farmland, and there's no reason not to rezon that for residential development. So when we rezon, we don't just look at, is it compatible, how long's it been vacant? We also look at, is this prime farmland? Is this potentially productive ag land? And so that's one of the criteria you'll be looking at, we'll be looking at when we decide, should it be rezoned? And so we can look at other things like, what is the location? Is it next to a highway? Is it next to a lot of small residential parcels? And it just happens to be circled by them. We can kind of make that decision. And so if we determine that it is appropriate to rezon it, then it could be rezoned. But we do look at that. That's one of the criteria we'll look at. And we had wanted to get the LISA system because that's a nice computerized way of looking at that. We just weren't able to get that incorporated, and that's something we're still looking into because that would be easier than us trying to make the, it kind of gives you a less objective, kind of a computerized, because you put all that information in a computer. How dense is the development around it? What kind of road is it on? And what's the soil types and all this other information? And then it kind of gives you a score as to how productive it believes it would be. And it kind of helps you make that determination. But, yeah, we wouldn't just, the zoning wouldn't just look at the golden factors. It also allows neighbors to have input, and so it allows a lot of other things to look at. So I don't, I think requiring the zoning to Ag 2 will slow down the development because right now, we don't do it in the Ag district. You just divide your land. This would put a step in where you have to look at it and consciously decide, yes, we want that land divided. But if it's a nice, big parcel of farmland, we can see that it's being farmed, it might be harder to say, yes, we want to rezon that for residential development.
So, Mary, is part of the, the goal of the new zoning to cut down on these private driveways and private roads and try to cluster that development so it fits into the current road system?
Yes, it is. So that's why we, on the cluster, we wanted to limit it to just four residential parcels using that one shared drive because today, it could be any number, as long as they meet all the other criteria. You can have 20 on one shared drive. So we wanted to limit it to something that was manageable while still keeping that as that's part of the sub-rides, and people are familiar with that. So if you want more than four of these rural development parcels, then you need to plat and do a public road. It's just that, I think, when, 2006, when it went through, they might have decided the townships weren't interested in maintaining that many little roads. I don't know that, but that's a possibility, that they don't want to maintain all these little cul-de-sacs is what they were thinking these were going to be. But at one point, they took away the size limit. It used to be you could only be 40 acres in the UGA and do a cluster development, but then that size limit was taken away. And that's when I think we saw a lot of these larger private roads. And so we're trying to address that and just scale it back down to where it's more manageable.
And what about the ADUs that was raised?
Well, I understand, I've heard Miles's comments on that, and I understand, I can see the scenario. He's discussing that it would be bad if just everybody decided, I want an ADU, and they just pop up, and all of a sudden, we just double the density when we're trying to restrict the density. And I know we have standards to, and there's something we're removing while we're adding these ADUs because in the county today, you can do a guest house. Tanya can tell you it. I, I don't think it takes a site plan or anything. It just, so people can do a guest house. In a guest house, you're not allowed to have a kitchen, and no one can live in it permanently, and you can't rent it. It's for short-term stays, but that's an enforcement nightmare for zoning and codes because they have to, if someone calls, they have to go out and find out, does it have a kitchen? How long has this person been here? So it's replacing guest houses. Those will no longer be allowed. Right now, if you want to have a relative live on your farmland, or you want a farm employee, you're allowed to have a mobile home. And mobile homes don't last long, they deteriorate. It's a much better, and most people, when they call up and say they have an aging parent, we tell them, well, you can put a mobile home on your farm. They're not interested in that. So these ADUs take that place. So we're kind of replacing those with ADUs. But there are requirements. To have an ADU, it either has to be a family member or a caregiver, you know, if you need a help, help help, or a farm employee. And the county commission put a, is it five or three years limit on how? or a caregiver, you know, if you need a help, help help, or a farm employee, and the county commission put a, is it five or three years limit on how? They put a three-year timeframe on that, so it has to be that way for three years. So, at the end of three years, if, or if you had a caregiver and the person they were caring for passed away, and you no longer need a caregiver, then that would end that three-year time period as well. And then you could rent it out to someone else, but it has to stay under the same ownership. So, you're on a parcel of land. You live probably one house, someone lives in the other. It could be that you rent out both houses. So, we tried to do, get rid of the guest house and the mobile homes, allow ADUs, but I understand that he's concerned that it could be, and it, and it definitely could happen, that there could be a rash of them come along, but I think Tanya keeps an eye on that. What are the numbers that we have?
Um, since two thousand sixteen, when the regulations became effective.
So, I think if you keep an eye on that, if we see a, a jump in the trend, we might wanna check on that, and, you know, maybe do, there's a, you could do an amendment to say, one of them has to be owner occupied. And, and that could slow everything down, because then you're not renting them both out, and so that could be a way to slow it down. It's just that on a farm, sometimes you have a person that, you have a farm, they lease the farm, or it's, it's owned by an LLC. I just didn't know if owner occupied was a good requirement to put on it right now, but it's something we could use if it seemed like it was going too fast. 'Cause I, I do think we should keep an eye on it. We don't want them to proliferate the way he's talking, that we just have, have increased our density without really meaning to.
Can you elaborate on what you just said about the leased farms and that why owner occupied, you don't think that's a good idea to do right now?
We, we just didn't do it when we wrote the amendment. We added that for the A1 District, because everyone's so close together. We really wanted to restrict on those smaller parcels where people would fit ADUs, so we did make an owner occupied requirement in that district. We didn't put it in the others, and I don't know that, um, the real reasoning behind it, it just didn't seem to be an issue, because, you know, you can have a tenant farmer, you can have someone that farms your land and lives there, and has lived there for, forever, but perhaps the land's owned by another entity. We see a lot of farms in trust, and so, I just thought it might raise a lot of issues. If we said you have to be owner occupied, then we'll have to define who would qualify as the owners, is it the trust, the trustees, their, their heirs, you know, and just, I mean, we could do it. We could add that requirement, as long as we went ahead and clarified who we would consider the owner.
So, Miles?
I'm just waiting for a question.
Are we getting close to, to answering any of your questions?
Thank you for the question. So, the last point that Mary brought up, if we're talking about to assist the farm with a family member or a helper, that's a farm. And A, AG1 is farms, and AG2 are all those little yellow small lots and are not farms. So, my only point was, find ADUs in the unincorporated farming area, but those lots should not have ADUs, 'cause we already have a problem, as you can see from the map, and you have the potential, not yet, but, you know, things are changing, the economy's changing. We see it here in the city of Lawrence, too. We may end up with a lot of lots being split off. And then ultimately, from experience in other communities, when you get the two properties, and then the person does move out after three years, they're gonna come back to the county commission, and they're gonna want the property sold. They're gonna say, let me sell the back piece, I'll put a driveway in, I have no money, my father's ill, and ultimately, it's gonna come back as a problem. So, I just said in the, I'm just suggesting in the AG2 alone, not allow it. But everything that you said would apply to all the twenty acre and above properties, which would be AG1s. And the other thing is about, on the second issue, about, um, new AG2s, new AG2s in the, outside the UGA. So, we're talking about adding more yellow spots. There are the golden criteria. I suggested three other criteria in my notes. It may be that it's less productive land, but still, there's the effect, if you allow more subdivisions, or whatever you wanna call them, certificates of survey or whatever, out, homesteads, out in the unincorporated area, you have more traffic, you have more public services required. We're spreading the community, the, we're hurting the farmers by having subdivisions, like one person mentioned. So, my suggestion there was that, um, even though, uh, the land may be more suited for AG2, we shouldn't have more AG2 in the unincorporated outside the UGA. I didn't touch the UGA at all. So, I have comments about that, but I was kept at the three. But just on those two points, I don't think that AG2 should be, we should have more proliferation of AG2, and we shouldn't allow accessory uses on those AG2 lots that we already have.
Any follow-up questions or comments on that?
And thanks for all your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I guess my only comment on that would be, um, I, I think it's, I think that's a point well-made, that the intention of it is for the farms and such. We also allow ADUs in, in town in most districts that are not for farmers and, and for, for that aging in place kinda piece, but that, but there's kind of this transitional bit of, of somebody that has always lived in the farmstead on a larger farm, may have split that off for mortgage purposes or for selling the farm and staying where they are, and that will automatically then rezone to this AG2, even if it was the original farmstead. My house to get, uh, which I live on a farm, a, a larger farm, but I, in order to get a mortgage, we had to, um, um, portion off the part, risk around the house, and so that would probably then go to AG2, even though it's part of a larger, in our mind, part of a larger farm. So, we might miss some of those pieces if we were to just make that designation.
It seems possible that may happen a lot, if you're doing that on your farm.
It's common.
That seems like a problem there, but maybe banks rather than...
Now, moving forward, the new, for the proposed new regulations address that, where it would not have to zone to AG2, because you would put in preservation the rest of the farm, which if we'd had the opportunity of doing that, we would've done it. So, maybe at this pass, we don't restrict an AG2, but we kind of, you know, keep a note that that's something that down the line, may be something that we would want to consider, because that first pass of properties then would've kind of already worked through.
Well, it might be helpful to know now if anybody has any ideas, if they'd like more information before we vote on adopting this, or if we want to propose any modifications before we have a vote. Mr. Willie?
I feel like I'm being a lot of trouble. So, just with the few properties and people that we've been through, it seems like, though we, they didn't leave happy, I think we did find out that almost everything that was wanted could be done under general business of the people that came forward in Big Springs, which doesn't mean that that's everybody. But I do think we couldn't, we shouldn't put to bed without discussion, Big Springs being such a different entity, if that deserves some special consideration for its own zoning category. I just throw it out there. I, I don't have a strong opinion that it's, really needs that, but I think it needs the discussion.
Is that something that we're prepared to do this evening, or is there more information we need?
I think I'd like to hear from the commission first.
Yes. Say it's own zoning category. What do you, what would that entail? Is that similar to what we talked about with loans are, or is it, and, tell me what that means?
Maybe we should pass it to staff and see if that's been something they've thought about at all in this discussion, Tanya or Mary?
Oh.
No, we haven't thought of that. We thought they'd either keep their, whatever they convert to, or go to village, so.
And I'm still not sure that it would be exactly what they're looking for. I'm not sure that there's, I'm not sure that they're able to accept anything from us that they'd like, even if it does what they want. I think there's just been enough angry animosity there, but we still have to kinda look and see what the options are.
We could look into it.
And one of the options could be that we just convert all of the approved uses in the B2 District, which is what their uses are available right now, into a district called Big Springs. So, nothing then would change for them.
If I may, I would just, I would second that idea, not, not a motion, uh, because, I mean, the, the whole idea behind all of this is to offer stability and predictability to the communities in rural Douglas County. That the village district as a concept was proposed, because most of these agglomerations of people have common characteristics. So, there's a profile that is predominantly residential. But Big Springs is its own profile that's unique from all of these others. So, I, I agree that it, it deserves more, um, consideration and possibly, um, as Tanya has, has proposed, that the B2 uses be, um, added to the permitted uses for GB within the Big Springs District.
Just limit it to the B2, to what they have now, just make it what the new district has what they have now?
That people were, were raising.
Well, that raises a question of what area would be covered by this zoning category. What is Big Springs?
Well, we showed you the boundary where we saw the smaller parcels, and then the B2 zoning actually covers a little bit extra, where there's some farmland. And so, I think if we were gonna convert it, it might be wise just to do the whole B2, otherwise, we're gonna have Big Springs, and then we're gonna have GB.
Great. The, the B2 areas adjacent to the identified boundary.
Right, just include them.
So, my, my only question is, I was, if, if the B2 uses will be all permitted, I did seem to, it seemed to look like in that list that there were actually more permitted uses in the GB than there were in the B2. So, what happens to those uses? Would there just be a combination of B2 and GB? There are actually uses in GB that are not allowed in B2. But they, they've actually now been permitted in the GB.
I guess that would be something to give us direction on. Do you want us to just allow all commercial uses and all the uses that were allowed previously in B2, B1, and R1 in this district? And just make it a big mixed-use district? I could see that. Is that where you're heading?
Well, then, can we just?
I think that we're getting into a lot of detail that we haven't explored, and there's a lot of questions surrounding that. If this is something that you're looking at getting some more information on, we can definitely do that. Let us do the analysis on it. I would hate to make a decision tonight that may limit some potential new Big Springs zoning district, um, instead of doing that analysis.
I, I think I've kinda given up on us reaching a decision tonight to just forward the whole thing without, 'cause we've come across a couple of issues, and I guess what we should, you know, spend the rest of our time on is focusing in on what we would like staff to research and bring back to us at our next meeting as a, as a whole. And then definitely get notice out to Big Springs that we're gonna be discussing the possibility of a separate type of district for them to be here at the next meeting. So, what else would we like to have just evaluated?
I have a few things.
Okay.
Sir, I heard you interrupt, though. Were you gonna notify all of B2 zone properties in Douglas County? It could be done?
No, we're talking about right now Big Springs.
So, one question was about airstrips. They were listed as, as possibly L1 or G, or L, sorry.
LI.
LI, there we go, my handwriting, um, or general industrial, light industrial or general industrial. We have a lot of airstrips in agricultural land. I mean, there are at least four in my neighborhood that are in all other practical purposes agriculture. I was just wondering if we could look in to make sure that that's the right way to handle those. I'm not sure we wanna open up all of those properties, if you're talking about rural farm airstrips, um, to industrial. That's one thing I'd like looked into. Um, we had a CUP for truck storage not that long ago, but I didn't find truck storage as a use on any of the tables, so if we could look into that. You have it?
We call it something different.
Okay.
Truck storage, if you'll notice, is used for all kinds of things. We use it for, a lot of landscape businesses use it. So, we have heavy equipment storage, so if you're actually storing trucks, it would be heavy equipment storage. But we're also adding landscape companies, contractor yards, so we could be very specific about just what use. Truck storage was just a big umbrella, but we do have it as heavy equipment.
Okay.
Or light equipment, if it's a light, smaller trucks.
The Udora Water, boy, my handwriting's bad. Um, the overlay district for the Udora Water...
Yeah, Udora's source water protection.
Source, there we go. Um, there are also, I mean, city wells for Baldwin, and even Franklin County has wells. Franklin County Water Districts have wells in Douglas County. Has there ever been any discussion about, or have they asked for any kind of protection?
They haven't. I know Udora asked us for this protection. They did a water protection plan, and so we incorporated it. And so, I know I talked to LaCompton and asked if they had wells, and they have wells, but they didn't get in touch with us. So, I don't know if you want us to reach out to other communities and see if they want.
All of those occur in the rural areas. I would, I think it might be worth asking Baldwin and Franklin County, both. Those are the only ones that I know of. And then the last one is about hobby farm, uh, that it's listed as no retail or wholesale on the hobby farm, and I would question that, just in terms of, I mean, if I, if I own three goats and I butcher one, then I, I can get a, a wholesale license from the state of Kansas to sell that by the cut out of my home. Is that something you really don't want having, happen on a hobby farm? Can there be no income? Or is that just, is that something I'd like us to have a little more discussion about? You don't have to solve it now.
Well, with regard to the hobby farms, I mean, with our urban ag ordinance, we can set up farm stands in our driveway. So, is there something comparable to that out in the county with hobby farms, that you can have a, a temporary farm stand, or?
I think farm stand is listed as a permitted use wherever hobby farms are. We have farm stands as a specific use. But I think the question is about being able to do wholesale. So, if you have
Or retail.
three livestock, should you be able to sell it? And so, maybe it depends on what district you're in, if you're in one of those close little residential districts. We'll have to look and see.
Well, selling it, have it processed somewhere else and processing it there might be different for the neighbors, but...
No, I mean, you can have it processed commercially. You still have to have a wholesale license in order to sell it, even if you deliver it elsewhere and it never touches your property, but there would still be, it just depends on if the idea is to limit traffic or if the idea is to limit income, and I'd rather not limit income if that's a possibility. So, that's all I had.
I have a totally different direction. So, one clarification for staff. I'm looking at the, um, okay, um, the bigger category of general regulations and standards for environmentally sensitive lands. Um, and I'm also looking at the subdivision design and improvements, and I'm seeing different wording and wondering what, why that is, um, under environmentally sensitive lands, under protection of environmentally sensitive lands, you have native prairie and restored prairie remnants, and then under, um, in the subdivision design standards, it's much more specified in terms of, it's just archaeological sites and native prairies that are listed on the Heritage Conservation Council. So, can you explain the difference?
We should probably add that language. We talked with the Kansas Biological Survey, first we had them listed as the person that would
Right.
would delineate the prairies or identify the prairies, and so, we changed it in the suburbs. We should've changed it over in the general standards. It would be identified by the Douglas County Conservation, the Heritage Conservation, because people would list their prairies there voluntarily. And the Kansas Biological Survey doesn't want us touching prairies that aren't listed for fear that people who maybe don't wanna protect them will destroy them, thinking that we're gonna come out and wanna do something with them. So, we should add that language to both.
Okay, so that, so I have a continued question on that. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, um, this, this, um, this term restored prairie can sometimes get confused, um, because when you talk about a restored prairie, that can be something where somebody has a native prairie, and they've gone in and they've taken the cedars out, um, and, and it's a native prairie, it's never been plowed. They've gone and they've enhanced it essentially by taking the, the cedars trees out. It can also mean to a lot of people, there's, they had form, former crop ground and replanted it to prairie. And so, I think because that term restored can be used for both, I'm just wondering if we might wanna just stick with native prairie. 'Cause if you have an area that's not been plowed, it's... it's essentially virgin prairie and you go in and you take the cedars out, it's really native prairie.
I could see, I could see native prairie being higher priority. But I know that Kansas Biological Survey said they've seen some restored prairies that while not at the level of a native prairie, are actually doing pretty well and they'd like to see them protected as well. So, I think if the Douglas County Heritage Commission lists them, if they meet their criteria, then we would put them as the protected prairie.
And this is a voluntary list?
Yes.
Of prairies? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is that when, um, when you, when the Kansas Biological Survey has defined high-quality prairies, they're always greater than five acres. So, one of my concerns would be is that smaller acreages would not come under protection if they weren't part of this Heritage Conservation Council. And if they were, I'm just concerned that we'd be missing some.
Right, so that using the Heritage Council is the better list.
Okay.
Even though it's voluntary, at least we'll get anything that they deem. And we may be protecting prairies that aren't great, but if they're being restored, they may be great in time. So, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with the protecting when they're not quite...
Well, what I don't, one of the things I'm concerned with, I don't want is, I don't want people to hesitate if they've got land that they want to do native plantings on. And it's not native prairie, it's cropland. And they want to go ahead and plant native prairie.
I was looking the other way.
I don't want them to hesitate in doing that fearing what might happen with their property.
So, maybe we should note that it's a voluntary listing. That might help even, because people that read that may not know that the Douglas County Heritage Commission only lists prairies that people have voluntarily agreed to list. So, that might be good to put that in there somewhere so people are aware there's not an entity out there listing your land.
Right, there's not an entity out there listing. But, but what I, what I am, part of my concern is that it does say that if a subdivision, if something was going to be planted, there is a site visit. So, if there is an unlisted native prairie there, it's potential that could still come under sensitive lands. Is that correct?
Not if it's unlisted. If it's unlisted, the biological survey could tell us there's prairie there and they could ask us to direct the people to talk with them, but they don't want us to put regulations on land that they've identified. Everybody wants to do it voluntarily, so...
And just one more thing. I noticed a couple times you say that stands of mature trees are defined. And I have not found that definition.
You're in the subdivision regulations. Did you look in the back there?
Maybe I didn't get to that.
I don't, there may be mature tree stand of. It might be written like that. Ours, I have to look twice to find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we briefly touch on the notice requirement? It's come up several times. It was in the notes.
Yeah, we've had a lot of complaints from members of the public who don't get enough notification, you know, even with our planning commission. We do what the state requires, which is a thousand feet. For cell towers, we do a lot more. I don't know if it's a mile, but it has a really wide notification. And so, the county commission directed us to increase our notification range. So, we went up to a quarter mile. We could go up higher. And I don't know, if people living near aren't bothered, it's hard for me to imagine someone living further away is. But then, I think people are thinking it could be that they purchased all the land near them or they own, maybe nobody lives on the land next to them and the person far away is the closest neighbor. So, I could see that. So, I could see expanding the notification range.
I was, I was struck by the idea that a quarter mile doesn't even get you to the next road in a lot of the parts of the county. So, that would be the half mile for a good portion of it.
Most roads are a mile apart, right? But there are some half-mile roads, so...
Yeah.
Just trying to decide how the impact would go.
Just wondering if we have any consensus on just what is a reasonable notice area for those that live in the county? The two of you?
In, in, I think a quarter mile of my property would only get you three houses. And I don't think that's enough. So, I think a half mile is kind of a minimum for an area that's still kind of rural. But if you're talking in this, you know, this ag2 kind of area where a half mile is going to be thirty houses or something, that that might be a different animal. But certainly, the, it used to be, I mean, a thousand feet is what we have now. And the proposal is to bring it up to at least a quarter mile. And I think, boy, that'd be a minimum, but I think maybe the half would be better. Jim, what, Commissioner Weaver?
I feel the same way. I can't see anybody at my back door, you know? And I go the other way and there's half a dozen houses that have been developed over time since we've been out there, in fact. But I wouldn't be opposed to half mile. I, I think that makes more sense because especially on the bigger areas and it takes quite a bit of distance to get those people. We had one by the quarry over here. There's only one house when we were talking about that. So, I would, I'd say half mile.
It would make sense to, since you mentioned that if you're having a notification in an ag2 area, a proposed ag2, perhaps that would be a quarter mile. And if it were an ag1, that would be a half mile. That might also, you know, if it's on the inner, on the near end to a city portion of ag1, that might catch more ag2 people. And yes, you would have a larger burden. But I think that certainly for ag1 in general, where you are...
What would be the rule to determine whether you do a...
Where's the applicant?
Where the applicant is? What if it crosses both?
It crosses both. It crosses both, you know? You catch, you catch more people for a ag1 that's near the, near the border between ag2 and ag1, and you catch fewer if you're, if you're an ag2 applicant.
Question for staff. Would it be easier just to have one notice area or two different types of...
I think it'd be easier for the county clerk to make his property ownership list. I think he might have trouble doing the radiuses from all the zoning districts. I think it's a great idea, but I think it'd be hard for them to make the maps.
Yeah, that, that's my only concern is the burden it's going to place on them. And so, for me, just to say it half mile is fine, I think.
Would we have consensus on a half mile? Except for cell towers.
Yeah.
Any other directions anyone would like to give to staff? Or any other questions you'd like to answer before next month about these regulations? Okay. You think you have enough?
I have a good list.
Oh, is it? I don't know. You, you were kind of suggesting that you didn't have the computer system up really to check on the ag2 properties yet. Is there a way to, to know how many parcels would be affected by the change?
How many parcels would be zoned ag2?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have that information. I think our GIS found that. So, how many parcels would be rezoned to ag2? It's just the map. You saw the map that I had. The county GIS is working on that. And we just want to look at it and make sure we're not making errors. Because I'd hate to have somebody pull up their property and say, "Oh, I'm being zoned commercial." So, we want to go through and just kind of make sure everything's right before. And that should be public before we come back.
Okay.
We can check on the parcels.
All right. Anything else? I guess we'll leave this one open until January. Do we have to do a motion to direct staff to bring back a revised zoning code for January? So, I guess I'll make a, please, Commissioner Struckoff, go ahead.
I move that we defer the item and give staff the direction already mentioned until our next meeting.
Have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Butler? All those in favor? This is nine zero. At least one more miscellaneous item.
I'm sorry. Is the next meeting appropriate timeline for that? Our next meeting?
I think so. I think we can arrange, we may, we may set a meeting with Big Springs. I don't know if we can or not. But if we could, it'd be good to meet with them and discuss the changes, get their input before we come back. Maybe a lot of the questions will be answered before the meeting.
Okay, excellent. But we can always, you know, let us know and we could defer it if we need to, if you don't have all the information ready. At least one more item. We need a new county appointee to the MPO. Commissioner Struckoff is stepping down, so it is limited to Commissioner Willie, Commissioner Payton, Commissioner Weaver, or Commissioner Sinclair, who's not here. Do we have a volunteer?
Commissioner Sinclair. I nominate Commissioner Sinclair.
I don't, I don't think we can do that.
What?
He'd have to know about his, you know, it comes down to the work schedule. So, Commissioner Struckoff, what is the timing of this meeting?
Meeting is the third Thursday of each month at 3:00 PM. Meetings last, I don't believe we've had a meeting longer than thirty minutes in the last year. The, the MPO staff presents us, we're the policy board. And so, they present us with some of the initiatives, a couple of action items. And it's usually a pretty brief meeting with a considerably smaller packet than we have at our typical planning commission meeting. Reviewing the, reviewing the minutes and recommendations of the technical advisory committee, the list of CIPs and adjustments in the city and county to transportation projects that, and funding, things like that. Work program reviews for the MPO staff. As I say, the meetings are quite quick, so... Commissioner Sands is also on the MPO policy board, so...
So, when are you done? Are you done now?
I have already been relieved of my duties, yes.
All right, so we need somebody to take over in January.
I don't know the exact date of the next meeting, but Commissioner Sands might be able to.
Why don't I jump at the same time? One of you?
When did you say those meetings are?
I believe the third Thursday of each month at 3:00 PM in this, in this room.
I think three of them were canceled in the last...
And that's what I was going to say. They're not always held. If there's no new business...
Really fun, too.
Well, Karen had her car in the barrel over the comprehensive plan. And I kind of fly below the radar, but I'd be willing to do it.
All right. Thank you very much. So, I could probably, without objection, Commissioner Weaver will be appointed as our county representative to the MPO. Thank you. Any other business for us to discuss this evening? Hearing none. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second? All right. All those in favor? Nine zero, we are adjourned.
Are you always the person?